Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Town of Woodfin regular monthly council meeting. It is Tuesday, October 15, 2024. Airs flying by, so is the day. It's 5:00 PM. I'll call this meeting to order. And before we do anything else, I want to first of all, welcome all of you. Wow, I wish we had a crowd like this every month. We're doing a remote meeting tonight. Two of our council members could not be physically present, given the circumstances and everything else under the governor's emergency orders. Our town attorney ruled that we could do a hybrid meeting, which we are doing. Two council members, as you will hear, are attending by Zoom. And I'm going to take you through the ground rules, just so everybody will be on the same page. For a remote member to be counted present and be allowed to vote, the member must be able to hear what is said by other council members, hear what is said by any individual addressing the council. That's why anyone speaking must come to the podium and the microphone. And we will ask you to introduce yourself and tell us where you live. And they also have to be heard by other council members. That's why we'll have all these microphones on. If a remote council member drops out for whatever reason, technical difficulties or otherwise, the meeting can continue on. Coram will not be destroyed. Council members are cautioned that any written communication sent between them, text, emails, instant message, all of them, their public record. Meeting minutes, the minutes will reflect, A, that the meeting was held with remote participants, and B, which participants participated remotely, when each such participant joined or left the meeting. If the member cannot physically be seen, can only hear or be heard, he or she must identify yourself when roll is taken and the meeting is commenced. Prior to deliberating, making a motion proposing an amendment, I'll get it right, raising a point of order, you must identify yourself, council members, as well as prior to voting. For every vote, Gina, our town clerk, will be doing a roll call for each and every vote. I now would like to start with a roll call of council members. Council member Cohen, are you here?
Your mute just failed. Don't need that mute.
I'm here.
All right. Will you tell us the code number you were given, please, sir? We'll move on. Council member Edgerton, here. Council member Irvin.
Here.
Council member Khan.
Here.
Council member Thornton.
Here.
Council member Young.
Here.
Okay, great. Thank you for attending remotely. I know it's difficult doing Zoom or anything else, but we're going to do it. First item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. I hope everybody's had a chance to look at it. There is one minor change that I would like to request. Under Presentations and Reports, F2A, I had hoped that that would be up at the top. Is there any objection on my comments about the storm being moved to the very next item of business? Okay with everybody?
Do we have something for the domestic violence here?
No.
Okay. No?
No. Okay, thank you very much. Let the record read that F2A will be moved to the very next item of business. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, we'll do a roll call. May want to speak up.
Cohen says yes.
Edgerton.
Yes.
Irvin.
Yes.
Khan.
Yes.
Thornton.
Yes.
And Young.
Great, thank you very much.
Did you give him a thumbs up?
If you knew where she was, you would say that's okay. You're going to put this or me? Hazel's. Okay. Next item of business, we have a proclamation to honor October as Domestic Violence Prevention and Awareness Month. Take it away.
Thank you. This proclamation was given to us to read by care partners. Sorry? Help me. My mistake. Plenty of help. Whereas domestic violence, which can include physical, mental, sexual, emotional, and financial abuse, is a means of intimidation to influence, violate, and control a partner involved in an intimate relationship. And whereas, an average of 24 people per minute experience rape, physical violence, and/or stalking by an intimate partner in the United States, more than 12 million people over the course of a single year. And whereas, domestic violence is a serious public health issue that results in billions of dollars spent annually in medical, mental health, and lost work productivity costs. And whereas, the problems of domestic violence are not confined to any specific groups of people, but can happen to anyone regardless of racial or ethnic identity, sexual orientation, education level, socioeconomic status, gender identity, or religious beliefs. And these problems are sustained by societal indifference. Whereas intellectual, whereas, excuse me, whereas intersecting layers of vulnerability due to race, ethnicity, gender identity, sexual orientation, age, ability, religion, citizenship, status, and spoken language in the context of American society make it easier for abusers to isolate, control, and create and sustain power over survivors with marginalized And children who grow up witnessing domestic violence in their homes are deeply impacted and are more likely to have trouble in school, more likely to perpetuate and be victimized by violence themselves, and more likely to experience long-term mental and physical health challenges. Whereas survivors should have help to find the compassion, comfort, and healing they need, and abusers should be held accountable for their violent behavior. We know there is hope. Partners at the Buncombe County Family Justice Center collaborate to offer a safe location for survivors of domestic violence to receive forensic medical exams, assistance creating safety plans, case management, counseling, and legal support in one location. Our combined prevention efforts work at the root causes of domestic violence by addressing the systems which perpetuate community attitudes that foster the individual patterns of belief, thought, and behavior which sustain abuse. It is the survivors of abuse who have been at the forefront of efforts to bring peace and equality to the home. Whereas Domestic Violence Awareness Month is an opportunity to stand with survivors to celebrate the progress we have made in combating these crimes and to recommit to preventing domestic violence in our community by working together in order to build safer communities for all. Now therefore, be it proclaimed on behalf of the Town of Woodfin, that the month of October 2024 be proclaimed Domestic Violence Awareness Month. And we urge our residents to make the commitment to stop domestic violence by speaking against it and learning more about the resources available to survivors and their families.
Thank you very much, council member. We appreciate that. Take it very seriously, and we're glad we did that. The next item of business is our consent agenda, approval of the September 17 regular session minutes, and approval of the tax collection report for the period ending August 2024. I hope all members have had a chance to review that in your packet. Are there any questions, comments to be made, any information desired from town manager? If not, is there a motion, let's make sure online. If not, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
I move to approve the consent agenda as amended.
Second?
Second.
As presented, it wasn't amended.
Presented. Excuse me.
All right. Madam, Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please, on the consent agenda?
Yes. Cohen?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Irvin?
Yes.
Khan?
Yes.
Thornton?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Great, thank you very much. As the agenda was amended, I'm going to, the council has given me the privilege to make a few comments about storm recovery. We do have several people here to talk about updates. We felt it was important. I hope that there are a number of people watching online that want to know updates. I think this town has done a pretty good job in keeping our citizens updated. Before we go any further, though, I want to say a moment, sorry, I hadn't been able to get a haircut in forever, and it's messed up my brain, and I'm glad I'm not the only one that had been able to get a haircut. So let's all take a deep breath. This area's been through hell. Some of you in this room have been through special hell. We sympathize with you. But tonight, let's be polite and cordial. There may be some heated things said. I will not tolerate any profanity, personal accusations, or any angry outbursts. Please speak only when your time is to speak. We're going to respect each other. And please be polite. Please be polite. This is Woodfin. We're not like those mean people in Weaverville. We don't yell at each other. I told their mayor I was going to say that. All right, thank you very much. I'm thrilled to see all of you tonight. I haven't cried yet, but I've been close. I've been moved to tears more than once since this disaster unfolded. And I want to say how proud I am of Woodfin residents and staff that worked, starting in the middle of the night two weeks ago, to clear the streets, get people to shelter, get them food and other vital supplies. Woodfin Police, Woodfin Public Works, Woodfin Fire are to be commended for their outstanding work under the worst of conditions. Sleeping on the floor, in cots in here, going without food and showers, not seeing their families, and some have little kids. It's all something we'll never forget. A very special shout out goes to the Woodfin Water District. Its board chair and manager have held a daily update on Woodfin Water status every day since the system stopped pumping, and their updates were factual and truthful. Thank you, Gordon, Seth, Larry, and Lauren. We owe special thanks to Duke Energy, Asheville Water, the Buncombe County Commissioners, and the Buncombe County Staff. Thank you doesn't feel adequate, but I have to say it. For New Bridge Baptist Church, we owe a huge debt because its pastor, Brian Buckner, and his congregation, they organize themselves into an army almost overnight. To the dozens of volunteers who worked under Vice Mayor Irvin's direction at that church to serve hot food, water, ice, supplies, you have my eternal thanks. Special shout outs go to Councilman Khan, who drove back and forth across the river ferrying supplies to Victory Baptist Church and one other church, Ken?
Liberty.
New Liberty Baptist Church. We're trying to treat all of Woodfin, one Woodfin, and Ken, living across the river, kept us honest in that regard. Kennedy Young, Johannes' son, every day with his truck, every day, all day, with me. Thank you. Even Jackie Pope Bryson, former council member, serving meals every day. Gus Mahicka, Stephen Donasaro, and the Jason Young family, our youngest Bulldog volunteer, I wish he was here, but we'll recognize him another time. They all worked shoulder to shoulder with me and us for the past two weeks. I'm forgetting names. I see all kinds of faces out here that came for a few days or a day or two. Thank you, the people, thank you. We have some very, we have some unfortunate situated, unfortunately situated people in Woodfin, and I'm proud of the way we got as many of them help as fast as we could. And it's not over. We'll be at New Bridge tomorrow, starting about 2:00, by delivering food. We have a caravan that goes down and back every day. We've moved the schedule to Monday, Wednesday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, moving forward. And we'll be there as long as this amazing organization called World Central Kitchen is there. I had heard of Chef Andre, but I saw a helicopter land in the parking lot of Bear's Barbecue downtown. Can't land a helicopter there. Well, he did. And my understanding is that Katie Button, the restaurateur, called him and said, "We need you." And he told her, "Give me a place to land my bird." And he did. That kitchen staffed by volunteers, it's amazing. You ought to go down and volunteer and see what they've done. They've been serving almost 50,000 hot meals every day with no questions asked. They've given the Town of Woodfin between 700 and 800 hot meals, cases of water, fruit, fresh fruit. It's just amazing what they've done. We dropped that food count to 350 meals because, as across the river has gotten situated, we were told by those churches, the demand is not as high. If the demand is higher tomorrow, we'll up our food order for Friday more than 350. We're serving that food at New Bridge, and that church in their gymnasium, it looks like a Walmart in there. FEMA brought tanks of water and an 18-wheeler of bagged ice. These horrible rumors that FEMA didn't come or diverted its money. Shame on anybody that's saying that, or anybody that's believing it. With their help in New Bridge, and the rest of this didn't come from FEMA, it came from you and all kinds of other people. Paper towels, baby food, diapers, feminine hygiene products, flashlights, batteries, I could go on and on and on. And we're stockpiling them in that church gym, because this won't end soon. It's cold out there, and it's going to get cold and it's going to get wet. So to everybody, amazing work. Last but certainly not least, to the town staff. Thank you. These have been extraordinarily stressful times, and I have observed you keeping your cool and going to great lengths to serve residents. Watching our chief financial officer trying to make payroll with no internet and no power was an experience I won't soon forget. I'm forgetting people, I'm forgetting organizations. It happens every time, and I'm sorry. Thank you for everybody. I see your smiles and I feel your energy. Scientists tell us that these types of storms may become not so rare. So believe me, once the dust settles, your government, us, will be having extensive conversations about what worked and what we have to find new solutions for. I'm very proud to be a member of the Woodfin community and to be your mayor. Next item, and it's always my favorite, I hope it is after tonight, public comment. The public is invited to attend this meeting in person or view it on YouTube. If you're attending remotely, other than council members, you won't be able to comment. We have had a sign up sheet, and I've given it a second chance. I'll call the people who signed up. I will ask you to come to the podium and speak as loudly, properly, into the microphone. First is Lolly Frederick, who lives on Riverwalk Drive.
Hi. As Mayor McAllister said, I am Lolly Frederick, and I live right in the Riverwalk Development, just a few miles, not even a mile, down here. But, and I'm here tonight, though, as a representation of the Riverwalk HOA Board of Buncombe County. We met last night. We've read the council's proposal to censor the mayor, Jim McAllister, for actions he took during one of the most catastrophic events in the WNC area. During times of crisis, it is the mayor that a community looks to for guidance and reassurance that all will be all right. Our community is still in need of reassurance and help, and Mayor McAllister is there for us. When Mayor McAllister provided the first press conference, and that's in parentheses because, yeah, it probably could have been a better title for that than press conference. But again, it was a time of crisis, and residents attended because they wanted to know where we stood, where he stood as leader of our community. And most were able to walk to the gathering. We would have had to drive, but there's a lot of community members that came and attended by walking. And having attendance there, it just shows that the local residents were looking for reassurance, that the necessary things were being done as much as possible. And that's what a leader does. Asking if two businesses could remain open during a time there was a stay-at-home order, we weren't even aware there was a stay-at-home order that day. I had no idea. And these were businesses that had family essential items people may have needed. Miscommunication is probably more the norm during a crisis, which perhaps led to the misunderstanding of setting up a relief center. Did it really matter whether supplies were set up in just one location at the time that many would need to drive to, or actually have two locations here at Town Hall that many could walk to? And in reading over the resolution, we do not understand where it warrants censorship. We see mayor concerned with the community fears and needs and trying his best to be as informative as he could. Again, this catastrophic event is definitely not a common event for WNC. We didn't really plan on it. Our development came together during this time to ensure that our residents were having needs met. Our residents are of various ages, various backgrounds, various professions. But even without the board having a meeting to plan a response to the crisis, most of us just began working together, all the residents. We had a neighbor begin a gravity filter utilizing creek water that could be used for drinking water. He worked on this throughout 24-hour periods. And we had residents bringing five-gallon buckets of creek water to residents that were not able to fill much fill, much less carry the buckets for toilet use. There were even grills going to provide food to those that were in need. Am I bragging about these things? Not really. I'm just so grateful that our community worked together without the board having to have a meeting to decide who does what. It just worked out through our community efforts. We wonder, actually, how there was time taken away from working with and reassuring the community to form a council meeting to draw up these charges on censorship. I guess it implies that there maybe wasn't that much need to assist the Woodfin residents. Mayor McAllister has, since he took office, he's been a mayor that welcomes his community to communicate with him when the community has concerns or issues. We had an incident in our development, and I had contacted him about it, and he was quick to point me in the right departments to handle our concern.
It's about three minutes.
I'll grant her another minute if she needs it. Thank you, Ricky, appreciate that.
Okay. But he directed us to the proper departments to handle our concern, and it was addressed and taken care of providing our residents with a sense of security. He's worked with the police department, our residents, and how Riverside Drive can become a safer exit and entrance point for our residents. He encourages open communication with our community and provides guidance. We ask that the council members reconsider and pull back this proposed censorship, as to not add embarrassment, not just to Mayor McAllister, but to our town during a catastrophic event. This really is a time for our town government to work together to form a united front of strength to the town residents.
Thank you very much, Lolly. Next on the list is a business owner, John Kerr of Metro Wine, and soon I hope to be open Quench.
He'll be open tomorrow.
I can't stand my own kitchen anymore.
What's that?
Go ahead.
All right, thank you. Yeah, I am John Kerr. I do live in Asheville, but I recently opened a business here in Woodfin, and I did that primarily because of the current government we have here and the support and encouragement I got to be able to do that. I will tell you, I am surprised that this group is attempting to censor Mayor McAllister, particularly in this time of chaos, and particularly in the beginning with the lack of communication, the inability to communicate, to get word out about what to do and not to do, and the efforts that I think the mayor made to communicate to the community about what was going on. I really believe you should, and all that's going on here, is this the place you want to spend your time? I just don't want to see this government becoming something similar to the federal government, which has become rather petty and unproductive. So please, stay the great government that I moved here, my business here, to work with and avoid the censorship. Thank you.
Thank you, John. What are your hours? Thank you, folks. John, what are your hours at Quench tomorrow, real quick?
It is 11:00 AM, last evening at 7:00 PM.
Quench in Reynolds Village, thank you. Mr. Walt Brewer.
Evening, Walt. Evening, I'm Walt Brewer. Because we have such an audience here and hopefully online as well, I wanted to take this opportunity to make everybody aware of the Community Emergency Response Team Training. This is a program that's available to everyone. I took it about 10 years ago, and it covers a broad overview of the sorts of things that you need to know for dealing with any sort of emergency, both to take care of yourself, but then also to be in a position to help your neighbors. And it is also a gateway for opening, this class was taught online, sponsored by the town, and it is a gateway for also taking some online courses that let you very quickly understand exactly how large organizations, whether it be the fire department or the federal government or the town government, there's a structure for responding to emergencies. And I think that if people had known how these structures were set up, then it might have made it easier to understand how to respond to them and how to navigate to them. So the initials are C E R T. I hope that when the dust or the mud settles around here, that the town will investigate, making that opportunity to take that training to, you know, more people. Thank you.
Thank you, Walt. That's a great idea.
Ron Larson, live on Weaverville Highway with my wife Linda, and we have a business, the Woodfin Business Park, centering on children. Day 20, and we woke up and all that Friday watched trees fall on our property. We probably had 20 huge oaks that came down. And never had such devastation in this area or confusion, questions. And we, the questions continued for many days, and gradually, because of the community help and state and federal governments sending help and, you know, things start to get clear. But I can't overemphasize how confusing things were with the ability to communicate, internet down, still down in many areas. So in terms of the censorship of the mayor, I have worked a bit with the mayor on a project on our property and have found him to be very integral, honest, and I'm not doubting the integrity of each of you on the council. I think that's important. We voted you guys in, and I'm really pleased. But I guess my question is, if there were criticisms, why it could not have been done behind closed doors and just talk it out and come to some type of, you know, something? Because there are two sides to the story. I don't know both sides. But there's a way of communicating where you could do it discreetly behind doors and don't have to involve the public as we are now involved in it. So that's my thoughts.
One of my favorite Woodfinners, Glenda Overbeck, please. Thank you for helping us at the church so much, Glenda. Glenda translates. She's fluent in Spanish, and she's always helping us translate.
Good evening. My name is Glenda Overbeck, and I live at 8 Bearbridge Hills Drive, and I've lived here for about 11 and a half years. I've been very active in Woodfin as a volunteer with the town, with nonprofits, with the school, and as the Democratic Precinct Chair for Woodfin on this side of the river, Ken gets the other side. But I have witnessed the increased involvement of Woodfin over that time, and there are so many more people willing to get involved and more people coming to vote. We significantly increased that. We got a ways to go, but we've increased it. And so I say that, just so you know, I have done a lot of involvement, and I know a lot of people in Woodfin. But I've experienced many emotions since I heard about this, but the one that dominates is sadness. It's really sadness and a worry that this action will slow the progress in our community and will bring bad news coverage that will indicate Woodfin can't get its act together. I don't like that. I would ask those who have brought this action, is this really the best way to address your concerns? And as our citizens are struggling with a devastating natural disaster, is it really the best time? I am among those who believe that Woodfin has come a long way, and I give the credit to the town council, to the staff, but I also give it to Mayor Jim McAllister, who gives needed leadership all the time to bring positive change and do with a laser focus on so many of our citizens who need help or are vulnerable. You heard that expressed in the disaster report. And any, I'm not here to argue about the motion and what it includes. And any, I'm not here to argue about the motion and what it includes, but I would say anything Jim did during the disaster was because of his big heart. It strikes, it strikes me that the leadership team has some roles and responsibilities to sort out, but I, and I don't find it surprising that that's true, because I spent my professional life with boards and I was in nonprofit management, and you, you have to sit down regularly and figure that out, but you need to do it differently. You don't need what I'm calling the nuclear option by asking for a censure motion. Well, I just hope I'm wrong about the media portrayal of this, but, you know, I don't want this town damaged. For this reason, I urge the council to defeat this motion, and then I urge our leadership team to come together and identify the areas that need to be more clearly defined, clarified, and then let's get back to living out the name of our comprehensive plan, Woodfin Together. Sorry, I got a little emotional.
And last, Mr. Thomas LaBord.
I live on Sunny Ridge Drive. First of all, I'd like to say ditto to what pretty much everyone has said, in particular with regards to the motion to censure. I work at a company that specializes in emergency mass communication and critical event response. When our software breaks, people can die. When something goes wrong, we get on the call, we work until it's fixed, but what we don't do is wag fingers and blame and try to punish individuals for something that is the result of team actions. I think it's really important to do what the mayor talked about at the beginning and have that postmortem retrospective, whatever you want to call it, and figure out what could have gone better, what could we have done, gone, done better? Because I think we'll find there are tools, there are processes, there are procedures that just weren't prepared for an event of this magnitude. And those are the things that you fix, not the people. These sorts of actions only serve to force people to not want to work together. And when the government doesn't want to work together, government doesn't work.
Thomas, when we start having some of these lessons learned, can we count on you to come and talk to us and give us some suggestions?
Woodfin Water has my email address. I've been sent one of the salesperson at my company.
Thank you very much. Thanks, everybody. I think that was well done. We'll now move into presentations and reports. Our annual audit report by Nancy Lux, CPA with Ray Bumgarner, King Schill, and Associates. She brings happy news.
Let's hope.
You're not going to read all that box, are you?
Pardon me?
You're not going to read everything in that box, are you?
No, I have the reports that you all got distributed to in that box. So anyway, so this year, we do have some hard copies. I think last year, we were trying to read off the screen, and it was just a little cumbersome. But anyway, I want to thank the town for having us as your auditor. This is our 11th year presenting your annual audit, and I want to thank the finance staff. You know, you've been wonderful and providing us all the information that we needed to, to prepare the audit. Sherry's been invaluable over the, the years, and, you know, her staff has been very, very helpful. So thank you so much for your cooperation to get this done. And, and we are on time with the October 31st deadline of, of the audit, although the LGC still doesn't have their current information up for us. But you all have a, a bound copy of the audit, and inside of that page is a letter, there's just one letter. This is the letter to those charged with governance. It explains what an audit is, you know, basic information, whether or not we had findings, any new standards. We did not adopt any new standards this year. We didn't have any significant deficiencies or material weaknesses. Years ago, we, we had reported for quite some years a lack of segregation, but the town has done a great job with adding staff to the departments, having plenty of segregation, board involvement as well. So congratulations on not having that recurring comment that, you know, actually, I think it's now the third year that we, we have not had to mention anything about that. So we just have the one letter here, which describes corrected, uncorrected misstatements. We had, I don't think we had any, quite honestly. No corrections to make. We didn't have any disagreements with management. We didn't have to consult with anybody else, and there were no other findings to reference in this letter. So that's just describing the basics about an audit. In your packet, let me just look at the table of contents and just describe that pages one through three is the independent auditor's report. And again, for the 11th year that we presented, we are presenting an unmodified opinion. That's the highest opinion that you can achieve with your audit. So congratulations again. No, no issues to, you know, warrant anything but that unmodified opinion. And then on pages, right after the report, pages four through 13 is the management discussion and analysis. And I urge everybody, if you're going to, you know, read anything in the audit report, this is a really great synopsis of the town and in comparison to the prior year. Plus, we also have a section, actually, you know, management wrote this, there's a section that describes on page 12, some economic factors in the current year, and then budget highlights for next year. And in addition, just a small section we added about Hurricane Helene. And, you know, essentially, we don't really know what the financial impact is going to be right now. FEMA is saying that they will reimburse expenditures. I don't know how much we're even anticipating to spend, but just wanted to point out, too, that next year, the single audit goes up to a million. If there are, if there is spending over a million, that will warrant or kick in a single audit. So just FYI, not that you would not spend what you need to spend, but, but that, that would impact the audit to some extent. In the subsequent event footnote, which is kind of deep in the notes, you know, Sherry and I talked about, should we say something, you know, but we don't know. We don't know really what the impact will be. So yes, it's a significant subsequent event, but it was mentioned in the MDNA, just to point that out. After the MDNA section, starting on page 14, if y'all want to flip to page 14, this is Exhibit 1, which is the statement of net position of the town in total. And you'll note a little bit of a addition this year compared to last year, and that is, we now have a column for business-type activities, since we developed a stormwater fund, which is considered a proprietary or business-type fund. That is new this year in your financials. Last year, it was a department within the general fund, so I'll point out the budgetary schedule in the back, which has changed a little bit because we no longer have that stormwater department. But anyway, just some notable highlights on Exhibit 1. Cash, you know, you have very healthy balances in cash, probably up over a million dollars from last year. Again, strong tax revenues and tax rev, sales tax, sales tax and property tax revenues are driving that increase in the cash balances. I also want to point out and note that in capital assets, as you continue to add to those two capital projects, the street capital project fund is now complete, and the, the wave project is still ongoing, but those capital asset amounts keep growing. And, and I don't even know, I hadn't really, I've thought about this, but, you know, with the, the storm, I'm sure that's impacted the, you know, the wave project and, you know, unforeseen spending on that as we go forward. But anyway, I just wanted to point out that those capital assets keep growing because the town keeps building and adding, you know, to its fixed assets through capital projects. We also want to point out that the net pension liability, the OPEB liability, and the law enforcement officer's total pension liability, those amounts are provided by actuarial reports that we rely on, plus the state auditor for the, for the logger's pension. So those amounts mainly have, well, not really gone up. The logger's pension went up a little bit, and actually, the LEO pension went down, so did OPEB, which we somewhat anticipated because of the criteria to collect on the other post employment benefits. If you flip the page now to Exhibit 2, that provides the statement of activities generally compared to the prior year, everything. That first column shows expenditures. We see increases in most departments, mainly driven by salary increases. That typically is the biggest component, and with COLA adjustments, we see increases. The only department that really had a decrease was in environmental protection, and the primary reason for that was breaking out the stormwater fund on its own. So, and that now is shown as a, in the business-type column over there, kind of toward the last quarter of the page. Property taxes down at the bottom, general revenues kind of are shown down, down here. I know this is a really weird presentation of, of an income statement, but that's how it looks under Gatsby 34. You've got your property taxes and other taxes, which compared to the prior year are on the rise, as I just mentioned. Not to bore you with all the details of every statement, so let's flip to page 19, which shows the general fund, original budget, final budget, and then the actual. And I just want to point out that overall, if you look at, and this is just the general fund, if you look at revenues over expenditures, the actual, the general fund has brought in a million dollars in revenues over its expenditures. Now, it then transferred some of that revenue out to the other two capital project funds to help them out, but overall, and you see a, a net loss, it looks like a loss just in the general fund, but really collectively, the general fund with its two capital project funds had net revenues of just under $700,000 or thereabouts. So again, another strong year for the town in June 30, 2024. Again, we don't know what June 30, 2025 will look like with, with everything going on, but, you know, Woodfin has been very, very strong in sales tax revenues, property revenues, and, and the likes. On page 20, this is where these new statements came in this year, page 20, 21, 22. These all reflect the stormwater fund. The stormwater fund was a new revenue source this year with charging residents of the town based on permeability of their surfaces and, and whatnot. So we see an increase in this fund to the bottom line of about $268,000. And with that, we do a statement of cash flows. That's standard in a proprietary-type fund. Okay, starting on page 23 are the notes to the financial statements, and there's really no significant changes or new items in these notes. They carry us all the way through to page 49, I believe it is, where we, like I said, Note 6, we note that, you know, the significant subsequent events were evaluated through September 13th, and that's pretty much all we chose to say, based on the complete unknown of everything. There's some supplementary schedules that come after that. And then on page 55, I want to point out the general fund. This is pretty much how the town operates on a day-to-day basis with actual spending, looking at the budget. The town does a great job of making sure all spending has been properly approved and budget amendments are made. There were seven budget amendments made in the current year. And if you, you know, care to look at all the details, you'll see that there was never any overspending in any department. The town's done a fabulous job of making sure everything is within budget or modified if spending is needed. And that takes us through page 60 with the general fund. Page 61 and 62 highlight the two capital project funds, the Greenway Capital Project Fund on page 61, and then the Street Capital Project Fund on page 62, which is now complete. So all that infrastructure is now folded in as one big asset into the general fund. And we have the budgetary presentation of the stormwater fund on page 63. Some additional schedules on 64 and 65 relate to sales taxes, and I want to point out that your collection rate is at 99.78, which is, you know, phenomenal, nearly 100%. And then the last report is the Yellow Book Report, which is not a single audit, but it just is a report where we look over compliance with laws and regulations, and we found no issues with anything we reviewed regarding compliance with laws and regulations. So anyway, that's the short version. If anyone has any questions on that, feel free to ask away.
I'll make one comment. There are towns all over North Carolina and America that would love to have a presentation that clean. And how many years, how many years in a row, nothing in the letters? Is this four?
Oh, I'd have to think now it was three. Okay, yeah.
We owe sincere thanks to Sherry Powers, who runs a tight ship and one of the best hires Sherry ever made.
Yeah.
Thank you, Nancy.
Yeah, thank you.
Sherry.
Appreciate it.
I have two very brief comments. First, I want to thank Nancy. Her firm is one of a handful of CPA firms in western North Carolina that one of their specialties is local government audits. It's, it's, it's sort of a different beast when it comes to general accounting, and they're always there anytime we have a question or need advice on how to handle certain situation, and we're very grateful. They do a lot of pre-work before they come in-house. They're usually in-house to do field work for about a week, week and a half, sometimes two weeks, depends on how things go, but they put a tremendous amount into preparing these reports for you. So we are, we're very grateful. The second thing is to let the public know the audit report in its entirety is on our website. The last five or six years is there at woodfin-nc.gov, so you can go to the finance page and look over any of that information that you're curious about, some of the things that she referenced tonight. It's all there for, for the public to review as well.
Thank you very much. Questions for Sherry? Anybody before we go? Okay. I, come on, you got to clap for a clean audit. Thank you very much. We did arrange, Shannon is next, update on emergency response and town conditions. We did arrange for Woodfin Water, City of Asheville, and Duke to give us quick updates tonight. So that's what's going to happen in the next part of the, next part of the meeting.
And I, I wish I could say mine is quick. Probably not as quick as it should be, but I will do my best. Thank you, Mayor McAllister, and thank you, everybody, for being here this evening. My name is Shannon Tuck. I'm the town manager for the town of Woodfin, and the last two weeks have been quite a journey. In this presentation, I'm going to go through a few different things. I'm going to start with the state of emergency timeline, and these are dates that I think are particularly worth noting as it relates to Woodfin and Woodfin's response. Other municipalities or the county may not focus on the same dates quite in the way that we did. Some of them, I'm sure, would be the same, but others are probably a little bit different. So in reviewing that timeline, we begin with September 25th, which was when the state of emergency was declared. And it was actually declared early in the day before Helene came, and that is typical. Buncombe County, for those of you who are not from North Carolina or are not familiar, counties run emergency operations in the state of North Carolina, and that's true across the state. So the folks in Woodfin, we're part of that response, but we're sort of soldiers in that emergency response army, and our station, we're sort of stationed in Woodfin. So that state of emergency was declared early in the day before the event. Later that same day, we had what we call the pre-event. That was a very significant, heavy rainfall, extremely heavy, probably, it may be the heaviest rainfall I have ever experienced. And I made the extremely poor judgment of leaving work at 5:30 in the middle of that rain event and tried to get home. A ride that would normally be about 15 minutes took me over an hour to get home. I had to reroute myself twice. The volume of that rain resulted in unfortunate conditions preceding a tropical storm. So that saturated, it provided flash flooding, it inundated... So that saturated, it provided flash flooding, it inundated our systems, and it created a lot of conditions. Here in Woodfin, we had issues with flash flooding, particularly along the Weverville Highway. We had multiple water rescues that evening. And that's really when our law enforcement folks really jumped into action. Beginning the next day on the 26th through the 28th is what I refer to as the impact period for Hurricane Helene or Tropical Storm Helene. The 26th is when, later in the day, is when the hurricane arrived in our area. And it lasted through the 27th, when the rains and the winds started to dissipate. But we cap it on the 28th because that's when the French Broad River peaked. That was the peak period on the 28th. So we sort of look at that three-day window as the impact period. Also overlapping this time period were numerous road closures. We had a stay-at-home order beginning on the 25th. Roads were closed. We had all kinds of downed trees and power lines, a lot of sort of treacherous conditions that people were encouraged, if they didn't need to drive, to please not drive. And that was about a five or six-day period. Communications, we all know communications were extremely difficult, particularly in the beginning. No cell coverage, no ability to get out and talk to people, no internet coverage. It was really difficult. And for those of us who are involved in municipal operations, that was a particular challenge. I note September 30th as a critical day, as that was when I first got cellphone coverage. So that's a good, you know, four days later. And that coverage was very intermittent in the beginning. It was very spotty. So, you know, you'd be driving along and all of a sudden, bing, 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 all your messages came in. And then you'd get into a pocket and you'd try to call somebody and you couldn't. No phone coverage, just occasional texting. That's what we've had on the 30th. But that allowed us to begin communicating with each other and with residents and our electeds to start to communicate what was happening in the town. So that's a critical date for me, September 30th. Another big date was October 4th, when we got internet restored. So cellular communication started to improve beginning on the 30th. But by the 4th, we had our Starlink in place and now we had internet. Also coinciding with those, Woodfin Town Hall reopens. And I have two dates because we reopened to staff and to emergency response needs on the 30th, but we were not open publicly. We didn't have power, we did not have water. So we weren't full steam on the 30th. And that took us a good week to get full steam when we had power. And we, actually, I don't think we had water on the 7th, but we were, I think, shortly after that. And so October 7th is when we opened to the public. Now, when I say open to the public, we were open, people could walk in and out. We had other community partners coming in and out. But even on the 30th, we were open to questions, concerns, comments, people coming in. We had somebody stationed at the door to make sure we could answer any particular questions or needs from the community. October 2nd is when we officially opened our distribution center, what we call POD or Point of Distribution or Place of Distribution at New Bridge Baptist Church. As Mayor McAllister mentioned, they were an amazing partner, being receptive to our request. This was particularly important to Woodfin because we wanted to be able to have a location that was easy for our residents to access. But it had to be large enough to take a big group of people, that it could, you know, route cars, that it was a site that could be secured, that we had excess materials that needed to be stored. We needed a place for a tanker truck. So all of these things, we could not do that here at Woodfin Town Hall. We just simply were not equipped. We also had law enforcement coming in and out of Town Hall. We had all kinds of other operations happening here. So that was, that was super valuable, that New Bridge Baptist Church was willing to help us out in that way. Also in the beginning, it was very important because we were receiving a lot of private donations. The challenge with the communications and the travel, getting tankers and other supplies into our area in those early days, created a lag before those FEMA support services were able to be received. So in those early days, we were relying solely on those private donations that were coming in and smaller shipments earlier. So that was another reason that that POD was so valuable. Shortly after that, though, we did start getting that, those relief supplies from FEMA. And then that got added to the distribution center. That distribution center is still operating. It has been scaled back Monday, Wednesday, and Friday. I believe the water tanker is still there, and I think that is every day still. Our FEMA disaster assistance folks are also operating out of New Bridge Baptist Church. So if you're an individual homeowner and you have an application and you need some assistance, that's a great location for you to go to.
Is that going to continue, like the messages this afternoon? Have we worked out a solution?
Yes, there, yes. We, we had to provide some additional security, but they are there. And I, my understanding is they're the rest of the week.
The public knows what you've been seeing on the news is true. There have been threats against FEMA, yes, even here in Woodfin. And Town Manager was given an ultimatum, you've got to provide security or they're going to leave. Thankfully, she's arranged security, so they'll stay. Thank you.
And another important date, October 9th, is when the Joint Emergency Operations Center was established. So initially, it was a Buncombe County response. But the unique nature of this particular event and the degree and extent of this event, I think everybody realized this really needed to be a more coordinated joint response. And so the EOC was expanded and it was relocated to a new site downtown. And all of the participating municipalities and other partners kind of joined that effort. Another important date, our FEMA request for public assistance was filed on October 10th. That is, means we've officially got entered into the system and we're going to begin that reimbursement process now.
Shannon, quickly, do you remember what day Craggy Bridge was reopened?
Oh, I, I don't. I know I have a record in all of my communication, but I don't recall, somewhere in the middle, I think. So moving on to our emergency responses, this is about a two-week period from the time that the state of emergency was first declared up to October 13th. And that, it's not that we're out of the emergency, we're not. But this was the most critical phase of the emergency. This is when we were still struggling with basic utilities. We had a lot of people in need of assistance. And, and we really just weren't conducting normal town business in any capacity. This was almost entirely devoted to emergency operations. And our Woodfin police were amazing, particularly in those early days. We were short-staffed, we had officers who were stranded. And the few who were here worked non-stop, round the clock for days, 24, 48, even 72 hours in some cases. And sleeping in the chamber, you know, operating on coffee when we could get water for coffee. We didn't even have that for a while. And it really, just really amazing to work with that group of people. So we're really grateful. Some of the things that they were performing, those water rescues that I mentioned earlier, evacuations up and down the river, not just in Woodfin but beyond, checking on missing persons, welfare checks, the emergency operation center requests. So in order to get something supplied by the emergency operation center and through FEMA, you have to be physically there to submit a request. So getting an officer over there when a lot of the rest of us couldn't even get to Town Hall in those early days was really valuable. They did food, water, and supply deliveries all over Woodfin and back and forth, going to distribution centers, collecting goods, and then redistribute them. Site security here at Town Hall, in our parks, at the Buncombe County Training Facility, at the distribution center. Wherever they were needed, they went. Emergency tree removal in the beginning, particularly in that first day or two. But when it comes to tree removal, the heroes are our Public Works Department. So in those, that first weekend, we had, I think, two or two and a half, three guys working that weekend. And they removed almost 200 trees. So that was a lot of work. And they all got poison oak or ID as a result of it. So we had to then send them all off to get treatment. Lots of trees down. Of course, we all know this, we've seen it. It's been incredible to see. I've never seen anything like that in my life. And they actually had to do two rounds of tree removal. First, they did a small cut just so people could get in and out on their roads or out of their driveways to get a passenger vehicle through. They had to go back later, about a week later, and then clear the width of the road so that the garbage trucks could get through. And we were one of the first municipalities to re-initiate trash collection. And we know how important that was. And even before we could do that, our Public Works guys staged our garbage trucks, one here at Town Hall, one at the Public Works yard, so people could come and empty the spoiled food that had unfortunately gone bad in the refrigerators and freezers. Landslide clearing, thankfully, we didn't have a lot of that, but we did have a little bit. And that, those roads had to be cleared pretty quickly. And then, of course, trash collection, which I mentioned. Woodfin administration, our focus during this time period was mostly communications. And there were all kinds, that's a very broad subject. There were lots of different kinds of communications. There was literally just meeting people out front and answering whatever question they had. In the beginning, we didn't have communication, like our normal communications that we rely on. We literally were listening to the emergency broadcasts or the Buncombe County press briefings, trying to get that information, recording it on big poster board paper, sticking it on the door. So anybody who came by, they could see some of the information we were able to collect. Once we started to get a little bit of cellular and internet, then we started to be able to push notices out on social media. And we continue to do that now, in addition to updating our website. And then there were all kinds of emergency reassignments. Our front desk staff were operating the garbage truck that was stationed out front to, you know, as people brought material in. We had staff working out at the Food Distribution Center, handing materials out, going to our trailer parks, recruiting Spanish-speaking volunteers to help us communicate with those individuals, surveying our parks and our streets, just to kind of understand what the conditions were. So as I mentioned, I don't think any of our staff did normal business for those two weeks. Regarding our FEMA and emergency operation assistance, it's been significant. The Point of Distribution that, at New Bridge Baptist Church that I mentioned, they've supplied potable water, that big tanker comes through FEMA. The trailer with all of the ice, I don't know how many hundreds or thousands of MREs, temporary restrooms, Starlink, public Wi-Fi, and law enforcement relief. That was really important for us and I'm thankful for that. Some of that was specifically for town operations, to get our facilities kind of up and running again. Some of that was for the community. We needed both, and we got both. Our, we've been assigned a FEMA Program Delivery Manager now. So this is basically a grant specialist who works for FEMA, who comes, she will be here for a year. She has relocated to Western North Carolina for the next year to assist three municipalities. We're one of the three assigned to her. And she's going to help us make sure that all of the reimbursements get submitted properly with the proper documentation and that the town be made whole or as whole as can be possible. Debris cleanup, the state of North Carolina did us a huge favor by getting a grant, or not a grant, excuse me, a contract approved. They went through a big statewide RFP process for debris removal. So we're able to skip that and go straight to a notice to proceed with these pre-approved collectors. There's going to be two kinds of debris cleanup for homeowners. It's going to be woody vegetated debris as well as what we call CND, so cut construction materials, waterlogged furniture, anything that was damaged, lamenting all of that, it's quite a bit. The roads are in better shape than I expected, with a couple of exceptions. Infrastructure is probably in a little bit worse shape than I expected. That's mostly stormwater infrastructure. Park restoration, that's very significant. We spent quite a long time talking with our grant specialists about that. We have two very large riverfront parks that are essentially a total loss. And we will be having to rebuild both of those parks. A newer effort is our mobile assistance. And I kind of put mobile assistance forward slash canvassing because that's a conversation that's evolving. It started as a conversation about bringing mobile assistance to people who had difficulty getting to the pods. But it's shifting now with the great news today that we believe that I think everybody or very nearly everybody in Woodfin now has power. And within the next day or two, everybody should have water. So that's huge, that's wonderful news. And so that, the need for that mobile assistant is significantly diminished. Nevertheless, we're still going to try to go out to our harder-hit areas, our lower-income areas with their assistance, particularly in our manufactured housing communities, where we think there's greater need and we know that there's been some storm damage. So we are now moving into this phase of assessing the damage and other conditions. I mentioned the utility and services outages. We have our partners here tonight that Mayor McAllister introduced. I'm going to let them talk about the updates for their groups. So we are primarily focused on streets, stormwater infrastructure, and then our parks. The streets, as I mentioned, fared better than I expected. We have, I listed three here. There's, there is probably repair to a hole more, but maybe not as significant. These are probably the three most significant. And Leisure Mountain and Denali is primarily the landslides that we're going to have to do some bank stabilization, some work on the ditches that are on the sides of the roads, probably a little bit of shoring up the edges where there's been some scouring. But generally, it's mostly related to the landslide. Sunny Ridge is probably the street most severely impacted. The entrance into the Sunny Ridge community was a culverted, basically a culverted stream crossing. That culvert with the volume of rain completely got pushed away, as well as all of the structure around it. That has to be replaced. It's left about a 20 by 20 hole in the road. And so that's, that's pretty significant. We found out, we knew about the washout. We didn't realize that that also impacted one of our water lines that serves that community. We found that out last evening. We jumped on it, we got our contractor onboard. They've already secured a new culvert. We are upsizing that culvert. So no longer will we have two small culverts, we're going to have one big culvert. Wherever we can, when we do these repairs, we're going to think about climate resiliency and think about how can our community build, not just build back, but build back stronger in a way that we can weather an event like this, hopefully nothing quite like this, but weather more significant events that we unfortunately think are going to be more and more part of our future so that we don't experience what we've experienced for the last couple of weeks. And then, of course, the parks, as I mentioned, very significant rebuilding that will have to happen there. This is all in the millions of dollars. It's probably too early really to guesstimate, but we had to kind of give FEMA some numbers. And we're easily over $11 million at this stage, so. So next steps that I just want to touch on, we're going to, of course, continue to work with our FEMA grant managers on the reimbursement process and the documentation process. Where, for Woodfin, we're looking at about six to seven separate grant projects. So that's like streets is one project, parks is another, each of the parks is another project, et cetera. We're going to meet with our property and liability insurance agents. These are our regular insurance folks. We think that everything, almost everything, if not everything, will be covered and reimbursed through FEMA. But we're meeting with these folks anyway, just to make sure. We're going to continue to support Woodfin Water in their restoration work. We also did some very modest assistance with some communications and our press briefings. But such as the Sunny Ridge Road, you know, where there's a need for us to collaborate, we will be. We want to continue to support our residents to meet those critical needs. Thankfully, that need is being, is diminishing. But there are still people in our community who need some assistance, and we're going to be there for them. And we're going to continue to sort of support our businesses by connecting them to resources. FEMA works primarily with individual homeowners and local governments. They don't support businesses, there's other resources for that. But there are some exceptions. And we're all trying, all the municipalities in the county are trying to understand the exceptions and if they can be applied here. And if they can, we will be letting our businesses know. If they can't, we're going to be connecting them or making sure they know about these other resources. And then lastly, of course, there is going to be a post-disaster evaluation and future emergency planning. I think it's natural for all of us to ask, what could we have done differently? How could I have prepared better? I think that's healthy, and there will be a time for us to have that conversation. It's not right now because we still have a lot of work to do with this crisis and getting ready for the next phase. But it will be a very important conversation, and we look forward to that. And that concludes my summary. Be happy to answer any questions.
Council members.
Is it Debris Tech? Is that the contract we're using for, through the state for debris cleanup?
So there's two companies. One is SDR. SDR does the collection and Debris Tech does the monitoring. So yeah, so those are the two that Buncombe County is also using and I think most of our municipalities as well.
And that, for everyone's benefit, that's one of the two categories where FEMA will reimburse at 100%. That cost should not ever touch the town. So we can get pre-reimbursement for up to 50% of that. And so I know we don't have the same reserves as larger municipalities. So I'd say encourage us to get as much of that upfront reimbursement as possible.
Yep, we did, we already submitted that. And we, and we also think that I, we may have to adjust that because we may have underestimated the volume of debris. because we may have underestimated the volume of debris.
I think everyone did. They've told us that they're willing to amend that pretty freely, so I think they'd probably do the same here, so.
Other questions?
Just a hat tip for dealing with so many different variables under so much pressure due to the staff. Our appreciation.
Thank you.
Indeed.
All right.
To the council members remotely, any questions, comments, concerns?
I don't have any, except to say you've done an incredible job.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Shannon. Good job. Representing Woodfin Water, Gordon Mayberry, the Chair of the Water Trustees.
Good evening, everyone. It's an honor to be here, and thank you for inviting me. First thing I want to do is thank the Board, Town Council, Shannon, the mayor, Town Manager. We couldn't have done what we did without the, you guys' support. Every one of you here that I'm looking at was at our 1 o'clock briefings, or communicated with me, or was part of some kind of communication, and certainly, I deeply appreciate it. This was a tough job, and, you know, we fought our way through to the end, although we're not exactly ready to close the books yet. I certainly have to acknowledge some people besides you. That is, first off, a fellow Board member named Larry Hopkins is in there. There, if you'd stand up, just so people can know you. He is one of the members of the Board. There is an additional member that isn't here, because she has another full-time job, or two, and that's Lauren Edgerton. And all three of us and the Executive Director of the Woodfin Sanitary Water and Sewage District were in constant communication for the last 21 days. I could call on them anytime that I needed to, day, night, morning, whatever. It was a great effort, but the effort didn't also, didn't stop there. There are also the team of the, at the Water District. And I don't know if you guys realize this, if the audience realizes this, but the Woodfin Water District is 13 people. That's all it is. Four of them work in the office, which means there's only nine people that actually operate Woodfin Water. Four of those nine people work at the treatment plant. One of them lives at the treatment plant. So what happened to us here in town, where we had access to some limited amount of food or water or what have you, Chandler, the man that runs that department, the leader out there, lives out there. He has diabetes. At one point, we had to fly medicine out to him. The road out to the Woodfin Water Treatment Plant was destroyed. The bridge to the treatment plant across Sugar Camp Fork, which is the water source for Woodfin Water, was destroyed. We couldn't put chemicals across the creek in order to purify our water. We couldn't get chlorine over there. And our partners, the MSD Municipal Sewage District, jumped in, because without water, we could not, the MSD could not process sewage. So they said, what's the right thing for us to do? Help those guys. And they jumped in, and they practically quadrupled our manpower. So getting out through Blackberry Inn Road, which is the, at the end of, is where our treatment plant is, could not have been done. We had to use very small pickup trucks to get chemicals out there, and working in conjunction with NC DOT, we got whole again and were able to operate. So I can't acknowledge and thank the team that I am part of enough for the work they did. We couldn't have gotten done what we got done. What we got done was about 99% of the water restored to the citizens and customers of the WSWSD. We have customers that are outside of Woodfin, that have people in Weaverville, in West Buncombe, people on both sides of the river. Ken is one of those people and all of that, that gets water from us. And we had to work extremely hard to get everything going. This morning, we were notified by Asheville Water that they had brought water to our meters. There are two places in our Water District where there's an interconnect between us and Asheville Water. And without the supplement of Asheville Water, every day that we're here, hurricane or no, we can't operate to, all of our customers, provide them water. I have learned, unfortunately, this evening, that the water on the other side of the river is not functioning, is not flowing right now. I asked for an ETA, which they can't give me, and it's really kind of in our best interest that we don't, because the last thing we need is to promise somebody something and not deliver it. And we've stayed away from that the entire time. And I just, all I can say is, is that water, to us, has been restored. Why there is, that interconnect on the other side of the river isn't flowing, I don't have an answer for today, but I'll get an answer tomorrow, which doesn't help you guys, but it's something we work on constantly. One other thing during this episode, in order to provide as many people water reliably as we could, we had to make decisions about what we could not provide. And those have all been restored on this side of the river, and one of those was Sunny Ridge. And we, Sunny Ridge is still valved off. In other words, that community is getting some water, but it's not getting the full pressure of water that they should. And there's a reason for that. And the Town Manager Shannon touched, said correctly, that we, we have a pipe, a six-inch pipe that serves that area. That pipe was completely destroyed. We repaired it fairly early, but the pressure that would have gone through this water pipe across the creek would create vibrations and pressure surges that would blow that pipe apart. And if we had turned it on, it would have, and that pipe had broken, it would have completely drained the Baird Cove tank. A million gallons of water would have gone down that tank. We chose not to do that. We, and, so we know that, I guess Baker Grading is going to be there tomorrow. They have upgraded their culvert. We're going to, we need, the reason we had this water situation had to be, that pipe had to be supported so that it wouldn't shake and destroy itself, and that should happen maybe in the next two or three days. So we should be on this side of the river in complete water restoration. The other side of the river is a little bit touchier right now, and I just have to see tomorrow what the problem with the flow, the flow is. We learned during this period some things that went well, okay? One thing that went well is we have a very solid infrastructure in the treatment and dam part of our system. The treatment facility was running at 100% as soon as we could put water through the transmission line, which was around day four. So, and they had no power. We ran that on an emergency generator. So we had a good, basic foundation. We could provide clean, pure, treated water all the way, all the way through. We never had to pump water that wasn't treated through. The second thing is, is we had, there was a wonderful reserve of technical knowledge about water and water treatment in our company. There was instant responsibility and accountability. Nobody, this team worked beautifully together. So we have a good foundation on the people's side of things. The third thing is, is that there's, this is about a 100-year-old company, and there is a great deal of institutional knowledge that we had that we could rely on. So we didn't have to sort of flail around and figure out what was going on. We knew what was going on. It was understandable. We learned a lot of things. And one of the things we learned is that we have some pretty serious age spots in our, in our system. They get, when the system is running normally, and we're very consistent month to month about how much water we treat and how much water we dispense, the system was fine. But the minute it got out, external, outside pressures and stresses, those places appeared and rose up. We know where they are, and we have, in a minute, I'll tell you what it is we intend to do about that. Second, we have the operating, operation capability of running the department even when we've got trouble. We are operating the Water District right now currently above its design capacity. And this has never happened before, and every day, we faced situations which were completely brand-new to us, and we had no idea what was going to happen if we did certain things, which we had to do to keep the water flowing. So this is something, again, that I'm going to touch on in just one second. The third thing is, is that unlike an electrical utility where you, where the, where the power lines are very clearly understood and mapped, the water distribution system is not. And we found ourselves quite frustrated from time to time, because people in our community did not have water in certain spots, and we couldn't figure out why not. We couldn't figure, why not? Because it wasn't always us. Sometimes it was breaks, but sometimes it was just not the ability to understand the interconnectivity of our network. So that's something we really have to work on. What, so what are we going to do to address all this? Well, the first thing is, is that in this budget year, which started in July 1st, just like yours, we put in the budget a significant amount of money in our capital improvement budget to hire an engineering firm who could look out five years under forecasts of the growth of Woodfin and our customer base, and say, this is what you're going to have to do in order to be able to serve your customers and the growth of the community in the next five years. We are going to have to expand that horizon from beyond five years. We have sections of our 14-mile transmission pipeline, which goes from our treatment plant to the tank on Reynolds Mountain, that is almost 100 years old. And we had severe breaks in that pipeline, some of which we haven't even found yet. What we know is that the amount of water we're releasing from the treatment plant, and the amount of water that's landing in Baird Cove and the Reynolds Mountain tank, is not the same. So we're losing water, and there's, we have a lot of pipeline that goes through wilderness. And at the moment, actually, we're looking for volunteers to walk that, because it's a, it's a serious trek. So a capital improvement plan coming our way. Second, one of the greatest criticisms that we have of ourselves is that our communication tools, we're not up to the task. We have a text alert system that when your power, when the pressure in the pipes to everyone's homes falls, we can text alert them and say, we know about this, and it'll be put on and returned in an hour, five hours, at 12 o'clock, whatever it is. We found out that the enrollment to that text system failed, and we had to, we had to figure out why it failed, and then re-instruct people so they could get text alerts. Second, the Water District's website is in need of some review. It needs to be the central place that people go to to understand what's happening. All the news should be there, and it's not capable of doing that. So that's another thing that we'll be doing. And also, we rely on the City of Asheville to provide us water, which we purchase from them for our customers and the citizens of Woodfin and West Buncombe County on the other side, the west side of the French Broad River. And that is not a tenable situation for us. First off, the Town of Asheville has made some decisions about what they want to do with their wholesale customers, and there's going to be a fiscal impact to us in the upcoming years. There was in this year, and they increase in severity in the next five years. So, and in addition to that, they could simply decide that they don't want to sell us water anymore. We need their water, not only to top off our tanks and serve the east side of the river, but it's the way that everybody on the west side of the river gets their water. And if, we have the potential of increasing our capacity at the treatment plant and pumping the water to the other side, but as a capital improvement, it would be very, very expensive. And, but we have to do something, and maybe the silver lining here in the cloud is that we have twice before been unable to get Weaverville to see us as partners, pardon me. And, but thanks to the Executive Director Seth Eckard, he met with the mayor and the head of the Water Department at Weaverville, and they have agreed to start selling us water, initially on an emergency basis, but they are open, once their treatment plant is full capacity, to perhaps becoming our partners. So that would relieve us not only of some physical burden, but also some capacity issues, which we, from Asheville, which we may not be able to survive without. So strengthening our relationship with Weaverville. So that's kind of where we are. We got, our plate is full. It's mostly good news. Still, we're not all the way home. I thought we were, but gosh darn it, and maybe tomorrow's another day. I have been doing 1 o'clock briefings every day, sometimes in this lot, but mostly across the street in the elementary school. It's been, they've been wonderful, lots of community input, lots of Town Councilman person input. I thank you for that. We're going to continue to do it until everybody's wet in this town. Thanks, guys.
Hold on.
If anybody has any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Ask council members questions, comments?
Thank you, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Did you ask?
Oh, I'm sorry, Johanna and Phil. I didn't mean to, okay. I asked for a City of Asheville water update, and I was thrilled to hear Shannon promised me that my water will be on tomorrow. Nobody's here from Asheville Water. Oh, there you are. Ben, you were behind John's head. I couldn't see you.
Not quite, as we have been expecting. So instead of this.
Let me say something about Ben. In the last water crisis a couple of years ago, he was invaluable. Our Crest Mountain neighbors, Viv, were the last to get water. Ben went, took the time and trouble to update me every day. So I was able to tell Crest Mountain the truth. One of the things, best things about Gordon Mayberry is, he speaks the truth. Ben tries to as well, so thank you for being here, Ben. Can't imagine what your life's been like the last two weeks.
A little busy. I appreciate that. Mayor, members of council, Ben Woody, Assistant City Manager of Asheville. Thank you for those kind words. I appreciate, I am not Clay Chandler, nor am I a water person, just for the record. Just to share a little bit, Gordon was correct. A portion of the water that the Woodfin system uses is purchased from Asheville. We, of course, have and will prioritize getting water to Woodfin Water Authority. Good news, a lot of good news. It was hard to get here, but after a couple of weeks, we are sending water into our distribution system. I think you heard earlier that a lot of the Asheville Water customers in Woodfin have water. We've gotten at least bulk water to one of the meters that we service Woodfin through. I'm looking at texts. I'm getting live updates as I talk. Let me look. Yeah, so I think that the, probably the challenge, and I think this will get corrected tomorrow, is we're getting water on the west side of the French Broad River. So our priority initially was to, number one, was to rebuild the, the distribution pipes from North Fork into the system, and we've done that, and we've been able to largely pressurize and get water into areas on the east side of the French Broad. I know earlier today, probably about six hours ago, we were able to start getting water into the west side of the French Broad. We, you know, we were concerned about, obviously, what the distribution system would look like going under the French Broad. Amazingly, it was intact and usable, so that was a pleasant surprise. So I know as early as 30 minutes ago, we had water at Sand Hill Road in West Asheville, so I know it's making its way into the system. It sounded like we have some pockets that serve Woodfin that may not have water yet. I would assume that's up closer, probably off Lester Highway. That water's going to fill as well. I mean, it's amazing how complicated the water system can be, but it's also amazing how simple it is in a way. So, you know, the lowest areas are going to get water first, and then it's going to continue to fill, and it will make its way to the higher areas. So it works just like you would think it would. So hopefully, we'll have water to your other wholesale meter very soon. I hope it's overnight, but obviously, we're doing that as fast as we can. So that's the really good news, is we have water that is into our distribution system. We're making great progress. One thing I want to flag for everybody, that water is still being taken directly from the North Fork Reservoir, so that water is not treated. We are literally putting raw reservoir water into our distribution system. We chlorinate that water to treat it as well as we can. So the water you're getting is. So the water you're getting is under a, at least for the city of Asheville, I can't speak for Woodfin, but our water is under a bowl notice advisory. And I would assume that's the case for Woodfin Water. What that means is that water is not safe for consumption yet. You can use it for flushing toilets, which feels amazing after you haven't done that for two weeks. You can use it for showers, things like that. You just don't want to consume that water. So our recommendation to Asheville Water Customers has been, if at all possible, continue to use potable water from, from pickup sites or other, other, you know, means that you can obtain that. If you need to consume the water, please boil it vigorously for one minute. I just want to make sure it's great. We can flush toilets and do things like that, but it is not ready for consumption. And I would assume that as long as Woodfin Water is using our bulk water, you're probably going to be in the same place with us as far as a bowl of water notice. So that's good news though. If you haven't, again, if you haven't flushed a toilet or taken a shower in a couple of weeks, it's great to have that back. The one thing I'll note, and you'll get a little bit of a, probably, we'll talk about this tomorrow at the county press briefing, but I'll give you a sneak peek. So we want to be able to get water into the North Fork Water Treatment Plant. And that's the plant that's really going to service Woodfin's water system. Our challenge is, is the sediment is still too high in the reservoir. So as numbers go, the sediment, and these numbers are complicated and I don't even know what the acronym means. It's an NTU, but I'll explain it to you. On a normal day, the NTU in our reservoir is point zero three. So it's less than, it's very little sediment in that reservoir. Within 24 hours after Hurricane Helene struck, that number was 90. And it's, and it's an exponential number. So it's, you know, it, it has an exponential factor. It's currently around 20. So it's, it's dropped, but we've got it down to about 20. It's not treatable for us. We still can't put that into our water system. And as folks know, those particles are suspended in the water. They're positively charged. So they just kind of bounce off one another. And, and the bad news is, is as the temperatures get colder, it becomes more difficult for that sediment to naturally sink. So what we're going to begin probably tomorrow afternoon is what's called an in-reservoir treatment. So we're going, are going to put a coagulant, aluminum sulfate directly onto the top of the water surface in the reservoir. And just so people don't feel concerned, that's the same coagulant that we use for the normal water treatment process. So it is nothing new. We're just going to treat outside of the plant instead of inside of it. And we hope that that will begin to settle that sediment in North Fork. So all that to say, we have water back. That's great news. Most of us do at least. It still may be several weeks before we have potable water back. So I just want to be clear, the situation that we have today with non-potable water probably is going to go on for a few more weeks. So I can answer any questions that the council has.
I don't know whether I'm going to have so many water experts present at one point. And I don't want to put anybody on the spot. There have been some concerns about toxins from Silverline. And I don't know if we had a report back yet, how that's being handled, testing.
Just a little bit of information. So just a little bit of information. So, and just one clarification. Silverline Plastics does not produce plastic. They actually buy plastic beads and then, you know, process it to create plastic pipe. So a lot of those chemicals that you would normally associate with plastic production are not present at Silverline Plastics. And I had one report or one communication from a staff member of the EOC who had spoken to the EPA, who had spoken and made touch or made contact with the management of Silverline Plastics. And they didn't have a heavy concern about what might have been washed out from, from that plant. They, but that's not to say there isn't a lot of other material in the river, but not necessarily from Silverline Plastics.
Great. Thank you. Good question. Bill or Johanna, either one remotely have questions for Ben Woody?
I do not.
Okay. Ben, thank you for coming. We really appreciate it. Keep it up. I don't know how you're, how you're doing it. And last, but certainly. We've had a great friend in Jennifer Bennett from Duke Energy. And she agreed to be here tonight to give us a, just a quick general update. But I don't know how you've been doing it either.
Well, like Ben just said, I'm doing a lot of talking and a lot of clicking, but I'm not doing a lot of stringing lines and climbing mountains. So I'm surviving just fine. But thank you all for your time. Thanks for inviting us. I'm happy to give an update. I'm really happy to come here and give an update because the progress is, I'm excited to report on it. So, but let me give you a quick overview, if you don't mind. Again, thank you to the council members, mayor, staff for the partnership and the welcome. I'm the Government Community Relations Manager here, Jennifer Bennett for Duke Energy. So I'm going to start high level and as Shannon walks us through the timeline, which was helpful and mind boggling to see how long and short ago all this started. So Duke Energy has restored power to 1.4 million customers in North Carolina since Hurricane Helene made its impact just a few days ago. Well, a few weeks ago now. I wanted to note Buncombe County peak customer count out at the early stages of the storm was nearly 145,000 customers. And put to reference to that, we have 149,000 customers in the county. So we saw mass outages. That's true for Buncombe County and really all of Western North Carolina that saw the major impacts of Helene. Yesterday at 8:00 AM, we reported around 10,000 customers remaining without power in the high-impact areas of Western North Carolina. And today at 6:30 PM, I just checked, we have 2,337 customers out in Buncombe County. So we've made a lot of progress in the last weeks and we thank everybody for their patience with our crews, with us as we work through that and work towards the restoration process. I'll note that like so many crews and utilities here, our teams have been able to implement innovative solutions to get power restored in many of the hardest hit areas in the mountain region. And these efforts, along with the close relationships and the collaborations with local, state and federal agencies have allowed us to make that progress that we've just talked about towards restoration. In this event at a high level, I'll note that we sustained damage to all of our systems and power delivery. So the transmission systems, we talked about it earlier in the water system, but in the power delivery system, the transmission is really the big lines that carry the power from the stations out into the communities and they land in the substations. They sustain damage. So we have repairs to do there. The distribution system picks up at the substation and it carries the electricity out into the communities. We sustain damage there. And then carrying on with that distribution system, what we call feeder lines. If you've heard my communications or Bill Norton, who's been doing a lot of our community updates, feeder lines then carry it further into the community and tap lines, which are what the lines are that carry it into your streets. And then service lines as well that carry it from the tap lines into your homes. All of those systems saw a lot of damage. So we were really working from the big lines to the small lines. And this looked different than typical storm restoration for us might typically, where we can go in and really isolate and kind of work down the lines. We were really having to look at the whole system from a restoration repair perspective. So we prioritize restoration and we did in this time with essential services such as hospitals, schools, emergency response centers. And that's really to allow impacted to communities to begin to recover as quickly as possible. So I am really excited to say all of our schools, I think we have one that has maybe some underground we're working through. And critical hospitals either are restored or ready to receive power. We do have some that sustain infrastructure that are not ready to receive power, just like we'll talk about other structures in a second. So I also wanted to note that a Duke Energy Western North Carolina Command Center has been established in Asheville. This will serve as our company's base of operations here in addition to the base that we have in Asheville. So we have a large operations center here. And what that's going to do is allow us to continue rebuilding the infrastructure needed to restore the remaining North Carolina customers that were impacted by Helene. It'll add an extra layer of operational support for existing center as well as our staging sites that we still have spread throughout the region, the county as well. So I'll note that many of our customers who remain without power, they experience substantial infrastructure damage in their communities. I'm sure you've seen much of it. Some of these areas, we're actually having to go in and rebuild our infrastructure as opposed to, to just repairing it or restoring it and putting the lines back together. So that will take us some time, but we will continue to provide those impacted customers with updates. We'll give them the additional information about their outages as soon as possible. And I can assure everyone in this room, we will continue working through the process until everybody who is able and ready to receive power does. So we're here. We're here for the long haul, just like everybody else and like all of you, our neighbors. I wanted to talk a little bit specifically about the Woodfin area. So most of you are likely familiar with this system. But the Elk Mountain Substation that's located right near the intersection of Elk Mountain Road and Riverside Drive, that really is the substation that feeds a lot of the Woodfin area. The lines come out of there and it actually feeds south down the French Broad River, down to the Bone Bridge. It serves to the east, serves a large portion of this area. So we saw damage again to all of those infrastructure pieces. But I will note that I, again, I think of those 200 or 2,337 outages at 6:30. I was looking at our map and it doesn't quantify it by town boundaries. But the best I could count, I think we have eight in Woodfin. So, and that's not eight events. I think we have eight customers in Woodfin that haven't been restored. And we're working through that. We've worked with the, the water system to restore power to meters. We've worked with the town. Thank you so much for access and cutting lines and cutting trees in. One thing that I do want to note is that as we continue on, we're going to see normal outages as well. So I'll use one that you might have been impacted by earlier today. When I was checking the numbers for this meeting, I told Shannon, we had a 2,000 person outage, or 2,000 customer outage. And I went, wait a minute, that's not right. And we had an accident that impacted a pole and a wire. So we will see, you know, as people carry on in day-to-day life, we're going to see those impacts. We're going to see them result in outages. And what I would ask of you is to ensure that as people ask questions or they experience those, that they're reporting the outages in our system. So they can dial 1-800-Power OUT. They can go on the app if they have the accessibility to do so at this point. Or they can go on the website and report those outages. And that way we have them trapped. We're sure that they have reported them. And I would say as we see things with restoration, I know we're making great progress here in Woodfin. But if you hear from people, I'm seeing my neighbors have power and I don't have power, to encourage them to do the same, to report that outage, so that we make sure we have it tracked in the system. Or if they check the map and the map's not showing their outage, ask them to go report that and ensure that they've gotten it tracked in the system. As we've turned circuits back on, if somebody has damage beyond the outage that was repaired, it might be their service line, it might be an indicator that there's something happening between their point of delivery and their house. But that is really the way to make sure that we're aware of the outage, we're tracking it, and we're going to address it. So I, I would be remiss if I didn't note, I was talking to our supervisors that, that is our, our Duke team that's leading the efforts here. So you've probably seen a lot of Duke trucks. You've probably seen a lot of trucks of companies that you're not familiar with, that are in this region from all over the country. And so as I was talking to our, our Duke lead here, he asked me just to pass along thanks and appreciation for the hospitality and the kindness that the citizens and the businesses and everyone here in this region has supported. They have worked long hours and that makes it much easier to do the work. So we appreciate the community. We appreciate the patience and the grace that our teams have been shown. So.
Questions from council?
I really appreciated the French Canadian group that was in our area doing such a fabulous job.
They got a lot of home cooking, I think.
I'm glad to hear that. Thank you.
Council members who are remote, questions for Jennifer?
I have none.
Thank you very much for being here. We really appreciate it.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, we're going to, we are going to take an exactly seven-minute bio break and we'll be back here. You're welcome to, you're welcome to stay, but we will be back in exactly seven minutes.
Do you have the buyer of this property sitting here?
Yeah. I'm disappointed that those people weren't going to stick to the part of the agenda that, to hear the rebuttal, if you will. Yeah. I guess, you know, people are, people can be very disappointed. They are complex. Covers a lot.
Want me to?
Go ahead. What do you got?
You know, I do not have a Woodfin Water text alert. I don't get anything from them. Sign up for that.
Right.
I don't have that.
Well, they, they had a sign up system, but it failed. So now we've got to sign up again. Yeah. I mean, that was my takeaway.
Excuse me, sir?
Yeah, come on, swing by around two.
Yep, yep, round two.
Doing all right. Yeah.
I'd like some water at my house on Sunny Ridge, but you know, it'll get there.
Goodness for that tanker. We go over there every day.
Did you see that hole? Have you seen that hole at Bear Town? So you saw that?
You could park in that.
Thank you so much.
Goodness, thank you for your work.
Cherry? Once again, thank you. That's, it's fun to read. I see nothing. No. It's fun. I've gone through and underlined those. It's interesting when I can go in and find the bottom line.
So is there, is there like a Hall of Fame or like three tapes or four tapes?
Yeah, I think so too. Taking away my showers with the wine.
I'm working on taking them away.
That's the only place I can get a shower. It's your house, don't you? We have, we get five minutes in and out. There are some days I'm sick to the line to get in.
See that range there?
Freeze, hide away.
Reynolds Mountain Tank.
Yeah.
Yeah, all tied together.
But then you sniffed our line right off.
Two minute, two minute warning.
I support that.
I'm talking about privacy.
Is there any chance of that? Putting that pipe back, those are crazy to go to the west side.
That would reduce your dependence on the west side on other, other sources. My understanding is that if the pipe is there and it's connected. My understanding is that if the park is there and it's connected, you can do it again.
That was our understanding, I had no idea.
From my grandfather, and there's some incentive, and they liked it.
That ain't cheap.
I was told, I was told 18,000 for us to have the jet rack and honey. Cherry needs 35 seconds.
I'm gonna do a check on Johanna, too.
35.
Oh, do I see you, Johanna, are you still with us? Okay, I see you, we're getting ready to get started, yeah, I just wanted to check on, yeah, for Jennifer's sake.
Just curious.
You're muted, but I see you.
Okay, good.
All right, I'm gonna flip back over.
Ladies, gentlemen, and others, we are going to reconvene. Thanks, everybody, we're glad a bunch of people stayed. We will continue with, we move into section called New Business, Section G.
Checking on them.
You okay to go, or? Let's get the slides up. The first item is a resolution number 2024-011, authorizing the town manager to sell a 1.45 acre parcel of land owned by the, owned by the city, owned by the town up on Appalachian Village Road, uh, further described as Buncombe County Pen 973-1540323, yes, we have to read all this, to William Young. Shannon Tuck will give us the rundown.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so I can keep this pretty brief. Uh, so back in February, we, February, we discussed disposing, and that's just sort of a fancy word for saying selling, um, town-owned property. It's about one and a half acres located on Appalachian Village Way. It's what we call an inholding, which is unusual in a municipal environment, but it's, it's a parcel that is surrounded by another privately-owned parcel. So it's a very unusual condition. It was a donated piece of land, um, which the town is very grateful for. We just don't have a lot of public, we don't really have a discernible public use for the property. It's very steep property, there is no vehicular access, there is a right-of-way, but no, uh, improved vehicular access to the property, and there's no access to water or sewer. Uh, selling the property would support some town adopted goals, uh, either for infill housing, probably by the surrounding property owner, um, and it returns the property to the tax rules. Right now it's non-taxable property, since it's town-owned. The state of North Carolina tells municipalities how you dispose of publicly-owned property, and the most common when it comes to real estate like this is what's called the upset bid process. So the council reviewed this proposal, as I mentioned, back in February, but we first had to rezone the parcel because years prior it had been rezoned to what we call transitional district, and it was, it created that very unusual spot zoning condition because of that inholding. So that little parcel was transitional and it was completely surrounded by R-21. So we rezoned the property in May and then started kind of putting out feelers for, for a sale, and the surrounding property owner did indeed make an offer to purchase for $24,000. Uh, the general statutes that, uh, guide us when it comes to disposing of town-owned property lets us know that we have to publish a notice a minimum of 10 days prior to the sale. So should the council adopt the resolution this evening, then, um, that would authorize us to go ahead and move forward and place that notice and then eventually schedule the closing. And that's, that's really it. Um, so this is our recommendation, is to approve the resolution that would authorize the town manager and the town clerk to move forward with this process. And if it's helpful, we even, uh, provide you a suggested motion.
Questions from council? Johanna or Phil, questions remotely?
I have no questions.
Hearing none, uh, would someone please make a motion?
I move to approve Resolution 2024-011, authorizing the town clerk to advertise the property for the upset bid process as required by NC General Statute 160A-269, and authorize the town manager upon conclusion of the upset bid process to execute such documents necessary to convey the property on behalf of the town council.
Is there a second?
Second.
Madam Town Clerk, please call the roll.
Cohen?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Irvin?
Yes.
Con?
Yes.
Thornton?
Yes.
Hanyang?
Young. She's gonna be on. The councilwoman, uh, did advise us that, uh, she might have to be in and out. Does that, does that record as a yes, no?
Uh, that's a good question.
That's why I ask you.
She's usually not present if she can't be heard, and so I don't know that it can be recorded.
Yes.
There we have it.
Yes.
Saved by the bell. Thank you. Good job. Ladies and gentlemen, the next item of new business is item number two, approval of Resolution 2024-012, censoring the mayor. Um, John Henning, the town attorney, is going to give a brief introduction and explain exactly what's going to happen next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have, um, been observing a room full of folks tonight that I think almost to a person were smart enough not to become attorneys and mire themselves down in words and how they're spelled and what that means and what difference it makes. Um, so I say this with complete understanding, and then on, the times that this has come up in 20 years of representing local governments, censure is almost universally heard as censorship. For reasons that I'll get into, it's not the same thing. I want folks to understand, uh, what, a little bit about what it is, what it isn't, uh, and the procedure that, that brings us here, um, tonight. Censure is, it's a fancy term, as Shannon said a minute ago, for disposal, is the cens- censure is the fancy term that we give to a, a, an official statement of disapproval or disagreement, uh, condemnation of, of an act taken by a fellow, uh, elected official of a, of a public body. Um, it is the organized consensus of that body that gets together to, to make a statement about why it disagrees with that given, uh, act or, or statement. So it, it's useful in its way that if you didn't have a mechanism to get together the consensus of the body just to make its statement, then you've got six, seven disparate opinions that sort of float around and don't, um, ultimately find a home in a, in a concretion around what we do mean to say and how we do mean to, to act as, as a public body. It's not censorship because that implies that we're intending to, and Mr. Overbeck's point is a well-taken, if we intended to silence somebody, I'd have a problem, and I think most of you would with, with an intent to silence, uh, a person. It is, it's more aimed at building consensus around what you as a public body, what a given public body means to, to, uh, to say to its people how it means to, to behave around and toward them. Um, some things that a censure proceeding is not, is a legal matter. It is, if you go look into North Carolina general statutes, you can look into federal laws, you're not going to find anything that tells you how to have a censure motion, uh, consideration. Um, it's a, it's more, again, how you decide you're going to speak and behave and act, uh, in service of your, your public. I, I want to note that you're, in a moment, Mayor McAllister is going to turn over, uh, the chairing of the meeting for this agenda item to Vice Mayor Irvin. That's, uh, a matter of, of, uh, proper procedure because it's not appropriate for somebody who is, uh, answering a censorship, um, sit, sit there, you all got me doing it, a censure motion to, uh, uh, also actively sort of govern how that's considered, uh, during the matter. So that should not be interpreted as any loss of status or rights or anything, uh, on his part, because again, there is nothing in a, a censure motion that removes any legal rights from any person. Again, it is a, it's a, an official statement of a, of a feeling that, that you make. It is not also an censure hearing because it is not, again, a legal matter, it's a policy matter that you all have. And so whoever has, presents whatever documentation of the matter that you feel like you need to, whatever Mayor McAllister wants to put in front of you, the council's entitled to give that whatever weight you want to. It, it's, uh, again, your interpretation of a local policy that is the only way that censure works, because again, there's no state, no federal law that tells us how to do this otherwise. That local, uh, policy that you're following is your, um, your, uh, your conduct and ethics policy, that's your locally adopted act that we are, um, you're proceeding under. It does provide that censure of a town-elected official is, is a sanction that is available for, uh, an, an act or, or speech that the council formally disagrees with, uh, if you find that that policy's been violated. Again, there's no other rule that governs how you proceed, so a simple majority is all that's needed to, to carry, uh, the, the resolution. I, I will say that I, in the times that I have witnessed this in my career, it actually can be a healthy process, and it can lead to, again, a more, uh, consensus, understanding amongst everybody who is trying, and I know, and I think your, your public knows that you're all here for the right reasons in your hearts, that you want to serve this town that you, you live in, um, and, and see the best for it. Um, I, I would just echo the mayor's, uh, request at the beginning, that just everybody here to listen to this, please do so respectfully, understanding that this is a process of, uh, actually coming to agreement, even though we disagree to get there. Um, so I would just echo that, um, that request from the mayor to respectfully listen and, uh, witness this process and let it come to its conclusion, whatever that may be. Um, I'm happy to answer any questions that you or the remote members that are joining us have, otherwise I'll do the unlog.
Any questions for everybody? Avril, you take it from here.
Okay, I'd like to open this agenda item by saying that I recognize Jim McAllister as our mayor, and I want to share what I have personally observed as his positive. Mayor McAllister displays an energy and a vision for the town of Woodfin and for its residents. He has amassed a network of wonderful volunteers throughout his town service, as evidenced by his support in the people here in this room speaking tonight. I have watched the benefits of the daily distribution of the World Central Kitchen meals that Mayor McAllister arranged for our Woodfin residents. I have observed his work distributing food, water, blankets, et cetera, to our underserved population, and I see his work at Woodfin Elementary School, working alongside the principal and for the benefit of its students. These are the types of actions where I believe Mayor McAllister excels. No one here, including me, likes the timing of this agenda item, but as a town council, we must ensure that we speak with one voice. This is particularly that we are responding to this disaster. We have an incredible amount of work ahead of us, and the matters raised in this resolution bear directly on how we as town address emergency management and disaster recovery moving forward. As a council, we will not always agree, but we are one body, operating for and with the town of Woodfin staff. Everyone in council has read the proposed resolution to Mayor McAllister, who has 15 minutes to respond.
Uh, this is a surreal moment for me, um, and I'm glad Jerry, former mayor, left, we talked this afternoon, and I did not want him to be here, he's heartbroken. And it's hard to believe I'm going to say what I'm going to say. But while I was trying to decide what to say, it, it, it has to be done. While folks in this area are grieving over children who drowned, and others are wondering where they're going to live after their house was destroyed, five people here thought it appropriate to spend precious time, time paid for by taxpayers, to apparently dream up a way to punish me for minor things we've been disagreeing on. Happily though, two of those, uh, in their spare time, helped deliver supplies and meals, and I am appreciative of that. The thing I most dislike about it was that it was done in secret, I was blindsided and found out about it through a routine meeting with Shannon Tuck, it was embarrassing. People in this town, and trust me, my phones have blown up, are furious about it. I've given you all the courtesy of not speaking about this in public until now, but no more. You've accused me of wrongdoing, and I will defend myself here and now. Worst of this is your poor judgment in doing this now instead of waiting until after this disaster mess was over. Our code of conduct, which we've all signed on to, allows us to reprimand members who do, quote, "conduct injurious to the accomplishments of council business," close quote. These four accusations, and that's exactly what they are, do not meet that test. Remember, the influencing referred to in the code, which we cannot do, refers specifically to, quote, "administrative acts," close quote, like hiring or disciplining personnel, processing applications for permits and licenses. The steps taken in conjunction with the storm were executive actions, not administrative actions. This censure doesn't even apply to it. It's obvious to me that with some, this is personal, petty and personal. And honestly, I have to say this, I think you should be ashamed of yourselves. As for accusation number one, here is what I believe to be the full text exchange, um, that is at question. And let me point out that I did get it from the town manager after a public records request last week, but only today, so I had to search and paste this. And I understand, secondly, that Councilmember Edgerton has sent everyone, I did not receive it, a set of documentation, so it means that there may be more surprises for Mayor Jim coming tonight. In this text stream, I cannot find anything that intervened with Shannon's action or was a directive to any town staff. I had two long-term small business owners panicking, contacting me in Europe as I'm scrambling to get home early. What'd you expect me to do? I asked questions of town manager and police, and I asked probing questions why. That's what a mayor does in a time of crisis, in my opinion. Accusation two concerns my holding a parking lot meeting on the first two days of the crisis to give residents vital information, given that there was no power, little cell service, and no way to reach the internet, including me and the town manager. Most of the folks that, folks that attended walked to town hall, so I did not, quote, "request that residents violate public safety directives to Woodfin Police," close quote, as the motion says. I made a mistake, I called it a press conference, that was dumb, but in the heat of the moment, it's the only word I could come up with. Y'all know that in crisis, we turn over control of Buncombe County. So I decided to read some of my text exchanges with Councilmember Edgerton, and there were a lot of them, to the county manager, Avril Pender, without revealing his name, and she responded this way and said, I could quote her, "At the 409 briefing, you asked if I was aware of any law prohibiting holding a community meeting or neighborhood meeting outside of City Hall at this time, and I told you not that I am aware of, and furthermore, it's a good idea to keep your residents informed," close quote. On the second day, town manager fully participated in a great way in the meeting. So if I erred enough to be censored for doing this, I'm assuming you have a disciplinary memo for her ready for executive session. This accusation is nonsense. Let me tell you what one resident said about this just this morning, and I'm going to quote her, with her permission. "This is unbelievable. We had neighbors say they went to town hall, banged on the doors asking for help and information, and there were folks inside who would not open the doors to even speak to them. Until you started speaking to us in the press, we had no idea where Woodfin stood on anything. It appeared to me that you showed great leadership, and now you're being punished for it. I heard you on the radio praising workers as well as citizens working to clear roads," close quote. I'm not exactly sure what accusation number three is referring to, but in the first few days of the crisis, I was in and out of town hall a lot. Came early, stayed late. And I specifically remember being in a lot of communication with our town manager, maybe it was because, just because I was here. She was the one who directed the water and other supplies, some that I arranged, some that were donated, to be kept here. She's the one that told me it'd be a good idea to let Woodfin Police distribute those instead of taking them somewhere else. If I had routine conversations with member of our police relative to helping Woodfin residents with emergency help, so what? Again, what would you expect your mayor to do? Town manager worked mostly from home for those few days, and my two-phone cell bars would barely allow us to text each other, we certainly couldn't call each other. Once the decision was made to set up our own distribution at New Bridge, I was asked to take direction from Woodfin Police- from Woodfin Police officers, which I happily happily did and have continued to do. My role at that place was to arrange for a donation of 5,200 bottles of water and daily hot food from World Central Kitchen. If I'm censored for that, that's, I'm happy. I'll take it happily. I'll be brief. Now about accusation number four. I won't ask for a show of hands in this room, but let me ask you silently, like a church. Who in this room has ever been misquoted by a reporter? More than a few. That's what this accusation is about. And I managed to get the owners of that publication to pull my interview from the print version. I also quickly let the county manager and other mayors know what happened, and I apologized to them. My favorite response to that came from the chair of the county commission who texted me, "Don't worry about it, Jim. Thanks for the heads up. I'll be sure to share it with our team." So where's the impropriety? I'm going to stop here and reserve my comments about the rare mayor's role in communication with the press and the public for the next agenda item. So my fellow council members, end this quickly. Do what you're going to do. Do what you feel is right. But please know that if you censure me, it'll be you who's ridiculed, not me. After tonight, who in their right mind would want to run for office in Woodfin? Knowing that at any moment, a fellow member of council can jump out of the bushes and say, "Gotcha." Thank you for listening.
Okay, I'll turn it over next to Councilman Edgerton, who will address the resolution.
Sure. I don't want to jump ahead of folks on the screen, but I'm happy to go. So just as a housekeeping item, as the, our town attorney told us, this is not an evidentiary hearing, so we're not going to go through everything that's in the resolution and explain why we're in support of it or find that to be reasonable or not. The the information that led up to the resolution is, before council, we have it. Not going to go through all of it. It's mostly the mayor's own communications. And so for just one, one exception to that, the one I'll address is, I believe it's the second item on the resolution, which is about summoning people to town hall on the 29th. And so I think we just need to orient that in time. The, the one comment that I've heard that is an attempt to excuse that action is, well, how could anybody have been in communication or know what's going on? And so I think it's helpful to to know what was going on. So as of the prior day, the day before, September 28th, the governor's press release on Hurricane Helene read in part, quote, "Travel remains extremely dangerous in the foothills and mountains where officials are urging people to shelter in place and avoid driving except in emergency situations. The North Carolina Department of Transportation has warned people to consider all no, all roads in western North Carolina closed unless you are seeking higher ground." So that was on the 28th. Also, on the 28th, at the county's briefings, which have been played on at least three radio stations every single time they have occurred since the hurricane hit us, there were represent, representatives from Buncombe County Emergency Management, APD, the Buncombe County Sheriff's Office, their statements at the 4:00 PM briefing included from Ryan Cole and Emergency Management. Quote, "Please do not drive unless you have to. Please stay home so that we can get resources in," from Mike Lamb on behalf of APD. Like Ryan Ryan Cole said, "I encourage you not to be out driving around unless you absolutely have to, because we've had traffic collisions and it's a dangerous environment, especially when there's limited traffic signals that are working." Winston Parish with the Buncombe County Sheriff's Department said, "As you heard, we have to stay off the roads, and that's something that all our community can respond to. Unless we absolutely have to get out, we stay home and stay off the roads." So those were on the 28th. At 3:00 AM, 3:04, on the 29th, our police department published a statement reading in the beginning is all capitals, "Do not travel in or to western North Carolina." In the regular case, "All roads in western North Carolina should be considered closed and non-emergency travel is prohibited. I-40 is impassable in multiple locations. I-26 is closed at the Tennessee State Line. Travel in this area for non-emergency purposes is hindering needed emergency response." So that's 3:00 AM. At the Buncombe County Emergency Briefing at 10:00 AM on the 29th, the advice from the prior day was repeated. That time, it was Mayor Patrick Fitz, Fitzsimmons, sorry, from Weaverville, who said, "Quite frankly, stay off the roads if at all possible." So that's 10:00 AM. At 12:30, Governor Cooper began his safety briefing and said in part, this is the governor, "Traveling western North Carolina remains limited and dangerous. 280 state-maintained roads are closed, including parts of Interstate 40 and Interstate 26. Please stay off western North Carolina roads so that emergency responders, utility crews, and desperately needed supplies can get through." That was echoed by DOT Secretary Hopkins in the same briefing, saying, "I also want, I want to also mention that unnecessary travel is hindering our crews from doing the work to get the roads reopened. Our main message is simple. Consider all roads in western North Carolina to be closed until further notice." So the advice being given was unambiguous. The the notion that it couldn't have reached a small-town mayor north of Asheville was contradicted by one appearing a couple hours before the meeting that was convened here in Woodfin, telling people, "Do not travel." And so that's the type of thing that we're looking at. And so when you see what I expect will be a unanimous expression of of disapproval of what's happened, that's why. So I say unanimous expression of disapproval because today, in my communications with this council, I don't believe a single person has said or or would claim to say that they disagree that the actions spelled out in the resolution were a problem. I think two will say that this isn't the right time, and then that gets to the question that Glenda, you asked, and I think, I think Ron Larson left, unless I'm mistaken, but he asked the exact same question, which was, "Why? Why now?" And and so because we're here, I think that deserves an answer. So the answer to that question is because we've been dealing with the problem for a year now. We've been dealing with a specific problem of the mayor making statements or taking actions that are either inaccurate or inconsistent with the guidance of subject matter experts. And so we've done everything in our power to try to address that internally. The idea of handling this internally, it's not newly expressed here today. That's what we've been doing for a year. You can trace this back all the way to a year now. And I remember our first town hall meeting with the West of the River Group, where we had someone stand up and ask the mayor, hey, well, my road never gets plowed by Woodfin because it's a DOT road. What are you guys going to do about that? To which the mayor's response was, well, call our staff. You're going to get a different answer now. Legally untrue. Municipalities and DOT maintain roads in North Carolina. DOT maintains DOT roads. Woodfin maintains Woodfin-owned roads. And so there's a wide spectrum of what the misstatements are or what the advice is that's inconsistent with the advice of subject matter experts. They range from consequences of probably causing a resident to call town hall angry that they had received direct misinformation from the mayor to the creation of a public safety risk where 91 people traveled in violation of the advice, unanimous advice of subject matter experts. And so when we try for a year to address this internally and not force us to take this step, and it fails and fails and fails and fails and then fails in a way that happens in a state of emergency and creates a situation where residents are encouraged to and do act in disregard of the advice of emergency management professionals, that's the why. And so if you don't believe me on us trying to do this internally, I have an email from June. I don't even remember which instance of a misstatement or misrepresentation of fact or a disregard for public services or subject matter experts this involved, but it's June 6th. And it was after the latest bout of coaching where Vice Mayor Irvin tried again, and she is saintly more patient than I am, but for that most recent time to sit down and work out a plan where this problem that we'd observed for that point, probably six months, could be addressed internally. And it included an email from her saying, "Good afternoon, all. After discussions, please can, please consider the following proposal for communication with the press moving forward. Town council members, including the mayor, will clear all intended statements with Shannon Tuck before making oral or written contacts with any member of the press. We all know Shannon has the most up-to-date information on town problems, projects slash problems, and can clear any questions with legal implications before agreeing on information to be shared." Jim's response was 19 minutes later and said, "To the best of my ability, I will commit to this. If there is a disagreement or if town manager is unreachable, I'll consult with the manager's number two in her absence and/or the vice mayor for input." And it has never happened. It just, every step short of this. And so when we get to the point where this pattern of conduct is jeopardizing public safety, that's the why. You weren't left with an explanation of why, and Jim's response to why he thinks this is happening. There's no explanation of why he thinks people are out to get him. It's because they're not. It's because we've tried to deal with this internally for a year. It's failed, and here we are in order to let the town know that if they need to get reliable and accurate information from their town government, that they should be looking to the town's professional staff as the source of that information. We're sending that message both with this resolution and in the following one, which will direct the press to refer to our town manager for those sorts of questions. So sorry to spend all the time on the why, but you were right. It was the right question, and I hope you have an understanding of why we are here now.
Okay, I will turn it back over to Mayor McAllister to speak.
Well, now I know why that document, package of documents was withheld from me. I had no idea the last part of what he's going to say. One thing you leave out, Councilman, is that on that communication with the press, that wasn't the last word. We all agreed to a compromise where I would agree, whenever possible, contacted before I do an interview, that I'd contact town manager and make her aware of it and say anything I need to stay away from, anything I need to highlight. I did, and the first time I did, her response was, "Make them give you all their questions by email a day in advance." Media hates that. I took media courses in college. That's one of the worst practices you can do. That's why, we'll talk about this in a minute. That's why the media contacts me, because I will talk to them truthfully. So you're forgetting that compromise, and you're referring to a giant problem that you have with me. If they saw the hundreds of texts from you lecturing me on item after item after item, it was fun for a while, but it's not anymore. Back to the public safety issue. While I was convening this dangerous meeting, you were driving back and forth to your office downtown with your family in tow, where you had internet and water and commodes that flushed. We didn't have the benefit of that. And I will close, and this will be the last thing I say, before I ask my peers to vote and do the right thing. I was at town hall early that first morning. There were a lot of people in the parking lot. They were milling. They were asking questions. Some of them were scared. Some of them wanted to talk to a police officer. One lady in particular, there was somebody in her neighborhood that desperately needed a welfare check. Lieutenant Ammons told me, "Do you know of, ask me, do you know of any other?" And he asked me to get the word out that if there are people that need welfare checks, we will do them. I later confirmed with Shannon that yes, they can do welfare checks. The people were already here. All I did was tell them, "Look, we're going to have it. We'll have a press conference at one." I used the wrong word. But they seemed to be excited because somebody, somebody was going to tell them something where nobody evidently had been telling them anything. I said, "That's all I'm going to say, and that's all I'm going to say. But y'all shouldn't do this." Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor.
Betsy, do you mind if I just respond?
You're not allowed to enter the process we agreed to.
Don't know that we had a agreed-to process.
John Hemmey?
I mean, we were going to ask if there was any discussion from council.
That's true. That's true.
Any further discussion from council, and also from the two council members online.
Right. And so just, I don't, I don't know if all of you know my background. And so, yes, I was driving into work because I'm a lawyer for the city of Asheville, and I've spent the last two weeks, I think 140 hours of them coordinating with FEMA, working out contract documents to get emergency aid in place, and otherwise getting support to the community. So yes, that's, that's specifically the type of travel that, you know, would happen in response to emergency, not having people come to a parking lot rather than turn on the radio. So that's, that's the explanation of that, I think. Anybody else?
And make sure you recognize the remote.
Absolutely.
Yeah. I want to say just a couple of things, and this is, first off.
Hey, I'd remind the audience, please, folks, Larry, please, thank you. Thank you. I know, I know. Thank you.
I want to emphasize that despite some of what is being said up here, nobody on this platform is doing this for personal reasons. Everybody here is trying their best to serve the town to the best of their abilities. Everybody. There are a couple of non-negotiables, I think, in town government that we need to be clear about. One is that communications have to be carefully coordinated, and they have to be factual. They cannot be casual. It is a mistake to confuse transparency with off-the-cuff remarks. Transparency means you are honest with people, but it does not mean you are not considering what you say, and you're not considering the nuances of what you say. These two requirements, by definition, need a team approach. This is why we have a council and a mayor, not just a mayor and not just a council. And over the past year, as Erica said, we've watched and been frustrated, despite our affection and being impressed with so many of Jim's fine qualities, to rein in the communications to the point where we are talking to the public with one voice. Both of these resolutions go to that. And I would also argue that this is probably, as John has alluded to, something of a healthy step. Whatever happens tonight, we're going to have to sit down and figure out how we improve on this. And given that we've been together, some of us, less than a year, that's about right. There is always the kumbaya phase when you start in a position, but there's also going to be a time when you have to figure out where the conflicts are, what people are doing wrong, and how to fix them so that we start to, we start to perform in the way that, Glenda, you hope we do. But it doesn't happen by itself, and it doesn't happen without conflict, in my experience. So this is one of those, this is one of those times. Given what I said about communications, though, the most efficient way to have communications going to the outside world, whether it is through questions asked beforehand, which seem stilted, but makes sure that gives us a chance to be accurate and transparent, the best way to do it is to have the communications in the hand of the person, in the hands of the person who is most knowledgeable, who understands the nuances, no tails at a detailed level. And in most cases, and certainly in this case, where we are lucky to have somebody like Shannon, it really does need to flow through Shannon until such time as we are all trained differently. But that, that person has to understand the consequences of their behaviors and understand the details. For all of us, it can be a challenge. Ego and impulsiveness has to be set aside to serve the town good. And our code of conduct clearly spells out that we're to let the administrators do the administrating, and we do the policy, and we set the priorities. It's pretty clearly stated. And that's what, that's the goal we all need to march for, march towards together. And maybe this is a bump in the road. But regardless of what happens tonight, we have to resolve to move forward in a positive spirit and reconcile, however this goes. Thank you.
Council, Councilmen online, would you all like to make comments, please?
Yes. I'd like to make a comment. This is Phil Cohen. And I'm assuming you can hear me correctly.
Yes, sir.
I just have a few sentences. And for me, the censure resolution contains allegations about violations of our code of conduct that I take seriously. But I think that the middle of a recovery But I think that the middle of a recovery from a major catastrophic weather disaster is simply the wrong time to bring this censure resolution forward. Instead, I believe the vice mayor should conduct a formal review with due process for both sides of the allegations in this resolution. I would then support discussion of this resolution after the results of such a review are shared. And that's why I'm voting no on this motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Young?
My voice will be heard with my vote. Thank you.
Certainly. Thank you.
What is she saying?
My voice will be heard with my vote. Thank you.
Okay.
Certainly. Thank you. My voice will be heard with my vote.
You gotta get that mic away.
Certainly. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, is there any further discussion?
I have a question for Councilman Cohen. What type of formal review is he suggesting?
Councilman Cohen?
Could the speaker identify him herself?
Oh, this is Hazel Thornton, Councilman Thornton.
Hazel, that's an interesting question, and I'd be happy to work with people to create a formal review. I don't know that we have any set policy for that type of formal review, but that's what I think would be useful here, especially in terms of due process, both procedural and substantive for both sides of this issue.
I like Hazel's question. Is there any way to get a little more clarification on what a process might look like towards that? Just so we understand, rather than saying we're kicking a can on this down the road, we are simply saying, "We're going to discuss this, and we're going to have a formal review," but what would that look like?
Well, I mean, again, this is a policy matter, not a legal matter. You don't have a policy that covers this, that I'm aware of. I can't think of anything directly on point. And I guess the thing that strikes me about it is, it is, it's paradigmatic of open, the open meetings law in the state of North Carolina that the, the, the acts of public officials are not for closed session. And so that's one of the things I worry about in how you conduct such a thing is, it's ultimately the opinions of, and as to, as I tried to lay out before, the, it's the opinions of the council as to whether or not you find a violation of, of your ethics policy that matter. Because it's a policy matter, and as I think you said, Ken, that you're, you are the policy-setting body for, for the town. So ultimately, it's a, it's a question of policy. I, I don't, I think that issues of due process, or I understand the, the note from Councilmember Cohen. I, I think this is as much process as you usually have for a censure matter. It's, but it is, it's, you do have a certain amount of freedom to, to consider the matter later and stretch it out. It would be in the discretion, and I would help, help town administration and your vice mayor to design a legally sound process to further investigate it if you decide to do that. It's in your discretion as a council, whether that's in the best interest of, of the town and moving forward.
My perspective is that if everything is, or ninety percent of what we've been looking at is documentation or the words of the person at issue, I don't know what a, honestly, I don't know what an investigation would look like when it's already written words that we have. But to the extent that could even be designed, I don't know what the use would be. So that's my sense, but...
Well, I agree. Absent a protocol that's already in place, I don't know why we would do that. I agree with you.
Phil, Councilman Cohen's suggestion was that the vice mayor would...
Well, the first thing I'd like to say is that I'm having trouble hearing people when someone is speaking in the microphone at the podium. I think I hear them quite well, but obviously folks around the horseshoe, I can't hear bits and pieces of what you're saying, so I don't know how to remedy that from my end. It's really, if there was a question or a comment, maybe someone could speak into the microphone
Yes.
at the podium.
I'm sorry, Councilman Cohen. Thank you. And this is dangerous because I'm sitting right next to the vice mayor, but since you have postulated that a formal review might be conducted by the vice mayor, I wanted to know if she had any thoughts about what that might look like.
Again, I'm sorry, but...
I wanted to see if the vice, sorry, Phil, I wanted to see if the vice mayor had any thoughts of what that formal review might look like, since you've, you've indicated you think that might be a path forward.
I, my background is in investigations. That's exactly what I come from. If that is the route we want to take, I will be happy to take all of the information that's in front of me, the documents that have been shared, and would be willing to look through this and try very patiently and deliberately to determine where the truth lies and also where we need to go moving forward. I am happy to do that if that's the choice that we make.
And could I just interject to say that the legal issue that, that springs to mind for me is that one of, of how, how you conduct, how you review the conduct of a public official in private, because then that's kind of the direction you're taking it in, and that seems to be somewhat perilous to me.
Got it. Okay.
But also, unless you're going to write some objective criteria that you're trying to meet right now in the policy that's going to be the purpose of the investigation to go and establish, and there isn't, you're, I don't know what the investigation would, would come back to a, "How does everybody feel about it?" And I, I just don't know, you know, we'd have a lot of reinventing the wheel to do and probably need another meeting to figure out how to change the policy to be some objective criteria that you can determine whether it's met or not in, just in the policy. So I, I guess I can't really fully endorse the sort of investigation model. I do fully understand where, where Phil is coming from.
I can speak to that. I did hear John's comments. I've been, that over the past week, I've received some documents, some texts. I believe there may be other texts, some other emails. I don't believe that there's been a full thing of the communications behind the four allegations in the censure resolution. I don't know that there's been a kind of, I guess I would call it due process for both sides, laying out the evidence in one place, not in bits and pieces, not in an email here or text there or a Word document. I think that Word document contained a great deal, but I think it would be incumbent to have a kind of process in which all the evidence that's available, and I believe that there's some that has not yet come to light, is laid out in one place, and then is reviewed in some process. I call it formal. It could be informal. But I'm not happy with the, how the evidence has been laid out. I'll stop there.
My question would be then, if all of the documentation is given to me and gathered and put out to everyone, is that what you would like to see, Phil? Excuse me, Councilman Cohen.
Betsy, I heard half of what you said. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. I was just saying, if all of the documentation that has been submitted was given to me to put together and then shared among all council members, is that what you are requesting?
Please repeat.
I'll try. One more time, a little louder. Sorry for the people in the room. Are you saying that you would like me to gather all of the documentation that has been submitted or that has gone back and forth throughout this process, put that together for all council to review?
I think that would be a starting point. I'd simply point out that one of the allegations, and I believe it's number three, but I'm not sure. Shannon and I had some back and forth in which she said she had some texts that were available, and that it would take a lot of time to pull them together, and I told her, this was a day ago. I told her, "Please, you're doing more important things right now. Don't spend time doing that." So there may be other materials that are relevant that are not, have not yet been supplied. I don't know the right process for this. I think we'd have to create a process. I'm not prepared right now to lay out a process, but I think that's what I mean by due process, a gathering of relevant information submitted by both sides and compiling that into one document, and then some type of review of that documentation, and we could decide on what that review might look like. I don't think that's something we're going to decide here now, but that is what I think should be done.
May I respond? Phil, can you hear me? Phil, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. This is Ken. I just want to be clear about something. If, if we were to take that under advisement and table the resolution or vote it down for the moment, it's very possible that we would be able to assemble a more compelling case, and maybe, or a less compelling case, we would know. And that would happen at a time when we were not in the middle of a crisis, and I see that that's an advantage. But it also prolongs the process, and regardless of how and when we do it, it will still be in the public eye. And I can't speak for the mayor, but having that hanging over my head for an indefinite number of months until we find ourselves able to do that, I'm not sure that sounds like a great solution.
And if I could echo that briefly, I...
I hear you, Ken, and we may simply disagree on that, and that's okay, too.
And Phil, I apologize for interrupting. I do want to drop in here. I agree with Ken's assessment that we're talking about a matter of months to have some, and honestly, I don't know, as I said before, I think there, there, I understand your notions of due process, and that is much more in line with a legal process. It is not what you typically see in a policy. And is, I do think we would be several months in trying to design what, what you have in mind. Now, I think we could do that for future purposes and, and make it a, make it a project. But I, I don't know, you know, I think you're looking at a very significant delay in, in just bringing this to a conclusion.
I hear you, John, and I'll simply point out that there is a UNC School of Government document that I think many council members, including myself, have read about the issue of censure, mayor and municipality. And one of the takeaways from that article for me was the importance of due process throughout the entire proceeding. And to me, that is paramount. I can't speak for the mayor. I can't speak for other council members. I can only speak for myself in thinking about, if we don't have a process to review this issue, then we should construct one, and then we should review it. And I'll stop there.
Phil, so you, you sent me that article, and I, I didn't pick up on that, that that was your interpretation. That's not what that article says. So the, it, it talks about when a due process concern would kick in, and it talks about how if you're doing something short of removing someone from office, there could still be due process concerns, but then it talked about when those arise, and that's when you're removing someone from a meeting or otherwise preventing them from, from speaking, which is...
Eric, I'm hearing some of what you're saying. It could be that you're further from the microphone, or the microphone's in good enough. I'm sorry.
No problem.
But I heard John very clearly, I thought.
So, so Phil, the, the takeaway from that article is that there are due process concerns if you're taking some sort of action that limits the ability of a member of council to speak or removes them from office, then yes, you absolutely have to comply with due process requirements. The, the takeaway from that article is that if you're not doing something on, on that level, that, that you're, you're, you're into an area where there is no due process concerns. And that's, that's because the, the right to speak at a meeting like this is a liberty interest, but the, we're not taking that away with a censure resolution. So it's not, it's not of the level of things that are noted in that article as triggering due process concerns. So I just, I didn't pick up on the fact that that was your interpretation, but that, that's, that's not, the due process issue is not an issue for censure.
Well, you may be right. I'm happy to reread that article. And certainly, you're a lawyer, and I'm not. But I do rest on this issue for me, that I feel due process is important if we're about to censure a mayor, especially when we don't have a process already in place, a policy, not policy, but a process also, we're going through this. And I realize that we do have a general process. We're doing it right now. But a matter of this importance, I think should be done deliberately, carefully, slowly, with all of the available evidence assembled in one place, and then reviewed, and we can talk about what that review might consist of. I don't have that right now. I think, and I don't think it's up to me to create that review. But I think this is a matter of great importance, and that that's what's called for.
Phil, this is, this is Councilman Khan again. I, I'm familiar with what the passages that Councilman Edgerton is referring to, and I believe he's, he's right. This does not rise to the level of requiring a due process. But I understand, and I agree, that we should have a way of dealing with this kind of thing. But I do, I do want to say one thing, which, and Councilman Young, I, I apologize if I'm saying things, putting words in your mouth that weren't there. It is, it's always better to be late and right, and it's always a bad idea to make serious decisions in the heat of the moment, when emotions are high. And for that reason, I'm, I'm, I'm sensitive to that argument that even though you're not saying it, Councilman Young, expressed in, in a different way. And I don't disagree with that. Something to think about. I guess that's it.
I'd simply say, Ken, that I agree with you on that, that in a matter of this importance, I say it carefully, slowly, but I'd also add dispassionately.
All right. Any further discussion?
It's just, well, it's just, yeah, I think it's just move to approve resolution 2024-12.
Exactly.
Or that would be the motion, had it been made at this point. There's also the potential for another motion. Do you have a different motion that you, or...
Robert's rules requires that the motion on the floor be dealt with before another motion can be entertained, I think.
If, if that's, if that's a contemplation, I can just withdraw it. I don't want to get ahead of you, but is that where we're going to delay further?
I would like to do that, yeah. If we can do that and, and still move on to the second resolution without jeopardizing this one, I think I'd be more comfortable with that.
Ken, do you want to do that?
I don't have a vote here.
No.
We are interested.
The notion was raised of, you may not want this hanging over you. Is that, if that's a concern, you can tell us.
Trust me, I can tell you from the faces of the residents, this ain't going to be on me. And quite frankly... And quite frankly, if this process goes on, I want access to all the documents that y'all have been sharing and talking about behind my back, period.
Does the, does that help inform the sense of, of utility here?
Of futility or utility?
You understand what I'm saying, Ken? But whatever you, whatever you prefer to do, I'm not trying to take, take the lead, it's just-
And I didn't mean that in a disrespectful manner to you, Ken. It's, uh, you should be watching these faces. I'll hold my head high either way, folks. We have so much work to do. We have so much work to do. And we've got, gotta discuss something else that's gonna bring up a whole nother matter.
The, the relative utility of prolonging it. I think the more we, it's entirely up to you, I'll withdraw my motion or I'll look for a second. I don't care.
If we withdraw the motion, it can be submitted at a subsequent time, of course.
Just table it, but that would be the same thing as delaying it, so.
Right.
Did you make the motion or you just made what a motion would be?
I'm trying to get direction on, so I've made the motion to approve it. I'm looking for someone to tell me that's not what you wanna do, because I don't, I don't have a preference, I don't wanna-
The way to do that is to vote, so.
Madam Vice Mayor, I think that's what you have, is a pending motion that's, that's in search of a second. And you're not, just to clarify very briefly, thankfully, you're not under Robert's rules of impenetrable order. You have your own rules of procedure that we'll refer to as we need to, but right now, I do agree, you've got a motion and does it have a second, is the question.
We don't have any other rules that would contradict that.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. And the motion is to approve resolution 2024-012. Madam Clerk, if you would read. Call the roll, please, for the vote.
Cohen?
No.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Irvin?
With great sadness, yes.
Pan?
With equally great sadness, yes.
Thornton?
With great sadness, yes.
Ken Young?
No.
You take it back?
Yes.
Okay, the motion passes on a vote of four to two. We will now quickly move to a kind of related, um, approval of resolution naming the town manager as the town's sole official spokesperson for the purpose of responding to media requests regarding town business and amending the town's code of, downtown council's code of ethics, sponsored by the same four council members. Thank you, neighbors. The resolution is here. The resolution is here, everyone should have read it. Is there a motion to, uh, to be considered here? So we can have discussion of it. Is there a motion to be considered here and discussed? Hearing no motion?
So, I made the last one, I was looking at you all.
So we need to, the, we'd move to, I'm sorry, I'm blanking on the language, I'm. Move, move to, all right, thank you. I'm a little rattled. Move to approve resolution 2024-013.
Second.
Were our members able to hear that?
No.
Move to approve resolution 2024-013. Do I need to read the description?
No, uh, second, second.
All right, uh, discussion on the motion that has a second. The floor is now open for comments from council members on this motion. I have some, if no one else has any comments. Okay. Uh, this is the mayor speaking. It struck me as ironic that on Saturday morning, I listened to an interview on Blue Ridge Public Radio with Pete Buttigieg, our Secretary of Transportation. He was being asked about how our transportation system is gonna be rebuilt. At the end of the interview, he said the most interesting thing to listeners, quote, "If you want updates on the plans in your area, call your local mayor, because he or she is the person who will be able to tell you," close quote. He didn't say call a committee or call a town manager, because in thousands of towns like ours across America, it's the elected mayor who knows these kinds of things and takes responsibility for them. That's exactly how it works in every other town in western North Carolina. How do I know that? I called every one of them and asked, "When's the last time you saw Jeb Smathers, town manager on TV, talking about rebuilding that town's economy?" Never. The mayor is the person that I believe, I'm very confident our residents wanna hear from in good times and in bad. It's, it's hard for me to be that kinda mayor, though, right now, because it is a struggle and it has been for the last year and a half, to know what's going on. Now, for a moment, put aside the fact that other than saying hello, I'm not really, really allowed to talk to town staff. During this crisis, I've asked for some kind of regular update so that when I'm up and down the streets of this town, I can be informed and speak truth. I've been repeatedly told, quote, "You'll have to wait and get those updates when everyone else does, because I'm not allowed to tell you something without telling all the rest of the council," close quote. Vice Mayor Irvin and I met with our town manager last week and specifically asked to be updated periodically, and were told it's not possible. We finally asked, or I did, if she had daily updates. She said yes. I asked, "May I sit in on those as, and listen?" And was told no again. Being- Yes, sir, please. Be very careful not to discuss the performance of a, of a town employee, because they have confidentiality rights. I don't, I just can't guess where you're going. Okay, all right, okay. I don't know the question, because that's, that's the mayor. Thank you. Being uninformed is the main reason that one might think I'm not our spokesperson, but it's a bad one. This stems the beef with Councilman Edgerton from when the mayor, uh, the town manager was on vacation and our police chief had been dismissed. The media was clamoring, there was a lot of confusion in the community, or when our mayor had separated from, our police chief separated from the town. I chose to answer one media question, "Is he still your police chief?" And I answered it, "No." And in retrospect, it was the right thing to do. I talked to my peers all over western North Carolina and they said you did the right thing. The quarterback of the campaign against that was Councilman Edgerton, and since then, our relationship has never been the same. I'm saying this in discussion for this motion because its intent is to kinda muzzle me, because if I was kept regularly updated like every other mayor, I could speak accurately all the time. One mayor told me that since September 28th, he's actually chaired a roundtable of his town manager, department heads, and the local fire chief. I'll stop talking after this. Remember what that long-term resident said to me this morning? Hear it again, because it illustrates why this motion should not be passed and why, in fact, the concept should be ditched. Mayor, this is unbelievable. We had neighbors say they went to town hall banging on the doors, asking for help and information, and there were folks inside who would not open the doors to even speak to them. Until you started speaking to us and the press, we had no idea where Woodfin stood on anything. It appeared to me that you showed great leadership and now you're being punished for it. I heard you on the radio praising workers as well as citizens. That's it. Is there other discussion before you vote?
Yes.
Go ahead, Councilman Khan.
Couple of things. Um, one, I, I'm sorry, yeah, this is, this is, this is Councilman Khan. Two, two comments, and I think they have relevance. I do not think that not getting an update on schedule that you would prefer entitles you to ignore what we agreed to. I think that's, uh, I think that's not, not your best decision. The second thing is, we are a body. We are a collective body and we are supposed to move into one and we are supposed to be able to trust each other, that we are being upfront with each other. And I need to read this, because I'm really bothered by this. On October 7th, is my time up already? I'm coming, I see the light. On October 7th, 616, Jim, uh, Mayor McAllister, you wrote a note saying, "Council, please read, but do not reply. Shannon, I have spoken to most members and you have councils to support the chief decision-making process." I know at least three council members that were not contacted, so the, the most is troubling. And I don't believe that you did contact us. We need to be able to trust each other, and if you're going to do things like that, it makes it hard and it makes us want to rely on the, pardon the phrase, Shannon, or the horse's mouth for information as it goes out to the public. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
I'd like to make one other comment and then I hope we can vote, uh, because we've gotta go into executive session. This change in the code of conduct requires me to do one thing and one thing only. I will not have to follow the compromise to talk to the town manager about maybe what we should be saying. All I have to do, and all you can make me do legally, is say the words. I'm not the official town spokesperson, Shannon Tuck is. But if they say, "Well, can you still answer some questions?", I am free to say, "Yes, what are your questions?" And that's how this is gonna work, because that's what the people want. And maybe we won't decide that for two more years in November. Is there further discussion? Johanna, Phil, would you like to chime in? Anything else? Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please? In support of resolution 2024-
Someone started.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, yeah.
Um, I've said it before and I'll say it again, it's not that I don't trust anyone speaking one way or the other, I just feel press releases are the best way to go and that's, I just wanna end on that.
Thank you.
Can I add one more thing?
Press releases, not verbalized. And I think that that would solve all of these issues. Thank you.
Can I add one more comment before we vote?
Sure.
I believe that you are correct, Mayor, that mayors across the land get to represent their town and be the public face. I will say that in the public briefings that NPR has been airing, um, Honorable Esther Manheimer is very rarely present for those kinds of briefings, but I take your point. What is important for that to happen, and we, I so want this to happen, is that everything that you're able to say to the public is accurate and factual and has been vetted internally, unless it's matters of pleasantry or in, or not consequence. To the extent that we can get there, I'll be a happy councilman. Thank you.
Just let you know, Councilman Cohen dropped off here at 8:02, so.
Okay, thank you. I'm surprised he made it this long.
Did we, did he give an indication whether he's coming back?
No, he did not, he was there and I seen him.
We know the situation, yeah, he's not gonna come back.
It'll, it appears on my side that he is, the screen is frozen.
Okay.
So it doesn't look like it was an intentional, uh, leaving.
Okay, thank you, Johanna. Any other comments or discussion?
What we're supposed to do with this? If he's frozen.
So if he's frozen, he's no longer present at the meeting, but because you had a, a natural in-person quorum anyway, you have a legal additional, uh, council member who's present and, and council member Young, um, there is no consequence to the meeting. You, it does not destroy a quorum and-
He's back. See? Thank you for the academic interest.
It's a miracle.
Councilman Cohen, are you with, are you with us, sir? Phil?
He's getting adjusted.
Okay. We're almost done, Phil.
Did you hear us, Councilman Cohen?
Yes, I'm back online.
Okay, thank you.
And I, let me ask a quick procedural question of John Hennig. Will executive session continue remotely? If we have, okay, all right. Any other discussion of this motion before you vote? I'm sorry, the public, I'm sorry, it's not allowed, sir. Public comment next month, come back and talk to us. I'd ask the town clerk to call the roll, please, on resolution, the approval of resolution 2024-013.
Councilmember Cohen?
Yes.
Councilmember Edgerton?
Yes.
Councilmember Irvin?
Yes.
Councilmember Pan?
Yes.
Councilmember Thornton?
Yes.
And Councilmember Young?
To make this all stop, yes.
Thank you for your honesty. The motion passes. Seeing that there's no other business, uh, I would ask our town attorney to advise us as to whether we will be going into closed session and why.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, um, we do need a brief closed session for the reasons set out in GS 143-3183 to consult with your attorney to preserve the attorney-client privilege.
Thank you, sir. Is there a motion to adjourn and go into executive session?
So move for the reasons stated by the town attorney.
Second, all those, uh, I don't think we need a roll. Okay, we do need a roll call on this, too. Thank you. Go ahead, please.
Councilmember Cohen?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Irvin?
Yes.
Pan?
Yes.
Thornton?
Yes.
Ken Young?
Yes.
All right, we are adjourned and we will begin executive session in three minutes. We're sitting here.
Did y'all hear that? Okay.